Two, one. All right. Well, welcome everyone. And this is the October 5th, 2021, regularly scheduled meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the oral call?
Member Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Wei.
Here.
Councilmember Willie. Vice Mayor Chow. Mayor Paul.
And I'm here. I'll make note of when Vice Mayor Chow has arrived, effectively right at the oral call. So welcome, Vice Mayor Chow. And I'll make a note of when Councilmember Willie comes back as well. All right, so on our agenda tonight are a couple of proclamations. We have our first proclamation under item number one, recognizing the 50th anniversary of the Tournament of Bands. And I'm very pleased to report that the organization, of course, is quite vibrant and active. They are having an administrative meeting this evening, however, and are unable to attend with us. But we do have an immediate past mayor of our city and council member, Stephen Scharf, who is here to speak on behalf of the community and as a parent who had band members in his family. And so, welcome back, former council member and Mayor Scharf. Would you like to say a few words about the Tournament of Bands?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can. Welcome.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Paul, for inviting me to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Tournament of Bands Committee, who has a planning meeting tonight. The 50th Annual Tournament of Bands, not counting 2020 where it was canceled, will take place this Saturday, October 9th, 2021, at Cupertino High School Stadium. Tournament of Bands is the longest-running public event in Cupertino. This year, the field show starts at 6:15 PM. There will be no parade this year. And per Fremont Union High School District policy, masks are required regardless of vaccination status. I talked to the Cupertino High School Band Director earlier tonight. He told me that this year there would be 12 bands performing. This is fewer than in past years, but he thinks by 2022, it should be back up to 17 to 20 bands, like it was in the past, if the pandemic is over. Then last Saturday evening, I attended the Fremont Union High School District Band Expo, where the five district high schools performed. That was a great show, and it was great to see the student musicians back performing. This is a nice way to spend an evening. They always have good food for sale. I think the admission price is either $10 or $12. I'm not sure what it is this year. And the Band Director of Cupertino High School didn't know. And as Mayor Paul said, I did have, both my kids were in band. My son was in band at Cupertino High School for four years, all four years. And actually, now he is Assistant Band Director at Homestead High School. And so that's always exciting to see a former band member come back and teach in the district. So hopefully, a lot of people can come out and support the band. They depend on Tournament of Bands to fund the band program. So thank you, Mayor Paul, and I'm pleased to accept this proclamation.
Thank you very much, former council member and Mayor Scharf. I really appreciate you coming out today and for your support over the years for Tournament of Bands. And hopefully, the public will be able to enjoy it for many more years to come. All right.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So we are on to item number two. Item number two is a proclamation in recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And from Nextdoor Solutions, we have Esther Peralas-Dikman. And from Women SV, we have Masha Starastina to speak on behalf of their respective organizations as to the proclamation. So, excuse me, we'll go first, Esther. Welcome, Esther. I actually don't see Esther. I do see, I do see Masha, however. So why don't we start with Masha of Women SV? Welcome, Masha.
Um, thank you for having us here today. We are so grateful to the city of Cupertino for declaring October Domestic Violence Month. And domestic violence is a problem that affects so many. Statistically, one in three women will experience, will experience domestic violence in their lifetime. And so how wonderful it is to partner with Nextdoor Solutions and our other sister agency, along with Mayor Paul and the city of Cupertino, to address this issue. And thank you for helping to shine a light on a problem that has been hidden for too long. And we hope that this proclamation will encourage survivors in Cupertino to reach out and get help and services they need so they do not have to face this problem alone. We look forward to continuing our partnership, building our village together so that every woman and child can be free and safe in their own home. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you, Masha. And I do see Esther now. Welcome, Esther.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. We're really happy to be here this evening with Women in Best V Silicon Valley. We have partner agencies all over Santa Clara County. I'm here tonight to also speak on behalf of the Domestic Violence Advocacy Consortium. We are the four certified domestic violence shelter-based agencies and one agency that operates transitional housing. We operate 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, and run hotlines. If anyone needs help, you can call 211 to ask to be connected with a domestic violence agency. We have privilege and confidentiality. When you call us and seek help, we are just working for you, and we're going to give you the support you need to move out of the abuse and the violence into safety, stability, and self-sufficiency. This is the 50th year of Nextdoor Solutions to Domestic Violence. We are the oldest and largest provider of domestic violence services in Santa Clara County. We serve from Palo Alto all the way down to Gilroy and beyond those borders as well. We are, as my colleague mentioned, one in three women, one in seven men, will experience intimate partner violence. It is an issue that is the gateway to other violence in our community. So that if we can, if we want to end violence in our community, we have to start by ending violence in the home. And so we're very happy to be here. We invite everyone to join us for a countywide walk to end domestic violence to be held at the city of San Jose City Hall outside of, at the rotunda. We're going to be lighting up the tower in purple. And everyone is invited to be part of that walk. We'll be talking about domestic violence issues and services and initiatives in the community. So we just want to thank you, Mayor, and we want to thank everyone out there for their support throughout the year of all the domestic violence partners that are out there. Together, we can end domestic violence in the moment and for all time, and we're here to serve you. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you so much as well, Esther, as well as Masha. And on behalf of our city council and the city of Cupertino, I would like to just convey the support that we have for your mission and the appreciation for the work that you do. Okay, so we are on to oral communications now. Although before we go to that, there is postponements and orders of the day, an item that I've added this year in order to check in with council to see if there are any requests for reordering the agenda or otherwise related to the agenda. And I'll go by a show of hands. Typically, we don't, but sometimes, you know, someone might want something moved up a little bit or, you know, otherwise ordered. So no hands with that. And so I'll go on to members of the public. This is oral communications. Oral communications refers to anything that is not agendized. And so if you have anything that you'd like to speak to that is on our enumerated agenda tonight, please save that for when we get to that agenda item. Otherwise, oral communications is where you can speak to anything that is not on the agenda. You'll have three minutes, and you'll need to have your hand raised by the time that the first speaker concludes speaking. And our first speaker this evening is Jennifer Griffin. And I have one more hand from someone called Call and User One on the telephone. And so, welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. And tonight, I wanted to talk about the Democratic Party. If the Democratic Party is not meeting your needs, you can change parties. You can become an independent. You can sign up for peace and freedom or the Green Party. If you feel that the Democratic Party has been overrun with alt-left groups and is not going in the direction you agree with, you can change parties, become an independent if you want. The Democratic Party seems to be going in a totalitarian direction as they take away local control and try to run the state from Sacramento. This is odd, since we had another group try to take over the nation's capital in January, also an alt-right group. Never in our lifetime did we ever think we would see such behavior such as this. This totalitarian group in the Democratic Party, working to centralize power in Sacramento, is also operating in Oregon and apparently trying to take over Seattle also. Are we going to see this totalitarian group trying to take over the country too? Is Washington DC going to be a target also? Again, I could say, if the Democratic Party in California is not meeting your needs because it has been taken over by totalitarian element that has produced SB 9, SB 10, and AB 1401, you can change parties, become an independent. California political power is not always about one party. There are many parties. Maybe the California Democratic Party has gone too far alt-left to be viable in California as a state and as a party federally. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, Jennifer. And it remains only one hand beyond Jennifer. That is Call and User One. Call and User One, I will hit the Allow to Talk button, and you'll need to hit star six on your phone to be heard. Welcome.
Thank you, dear Mayor, council members, and the audience. And I'm thankful if whoever is concerned about this matter, I very appreciate all the consistent assistance on this matter. And after multiple applications, we did get a symbolic permit. And there's an necessary court proceeding still there, which is very unnecessary because everyone has a little legal knowledge, knows, have a little stipulation, this should be closed. And so we actually asked the city attorney, since we are the, actually, the residents paid a tax dollar for the city, all the city servants. And so we are, legally, actually should have some help on that part since the outside council is still not stopping doing the process. And another thing we want is, I'm sorry, more transparent because there's a special communication within the outside attorneys with your concept. And for us as the residents, we should have a more priority than that. And the thing is, we also like to talk to the city manager, again, the management office, including all the staff. They're the servants for the city residents, with the long-term city residents who are paying high tax all the time to the city all this toll. So we also like to directly talk to them. We've been asking for months now. We haven't been able to get to that. And another thing, we request to have different outside counsel because it sounds like they are not really working for the residents. A lot of times, actually, a lot of times, their own wing purpose as legal paper. You can see, you can see, winning is more important than winning. So those are the points I'd like to, to confidently, to consider. And again, thanks for everybody for in the conversation.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. We'll take it back to the agenda. And we are on to item number three. Item number three is council updates on activities and brief announcements. So the allocated time is about a minute each. And those are just anything that don't have to do with our regular committee assignments, which we assign at the beginning of our one-year term, which is in early December. So I'll go first, again, with understanding that we each have about a minute. The two things I'd like to report right now are that, over the course of the last week, I did send a number of veto and signature requests and follow-on to the work that the Legislative Review Committee has done over the course of this last legislative term for the state. So I'm very appreciative of Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Moore for their work done there. We followed up in accordance with our positions taken with those types of letters. In the midst of that, though, a couple of students wrote me, and at least Councilmember Moore as well, asking for support for being able to provide menstrual products in the schools because of, you know, various issues. And it turned out, in fact, and then Councilmember Moore pointed this out, that there's already legislation awaiting the governor's signature there. And so for AB 367, I wrote just on my own behalf a letter to the governor asking for a signature there. The other item that I'd like to report out on, as promised, I did try to lead by example. I've written a mayor's corner column, which I will submit to the city clerk. If you'd like to see it, it will at least be available in the updated communications accompanying this meeting in our website. So thank you very much. Councilmember Willie's next.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So what I'd like to touch on is that we also received email from some Cupertino High School students asking if they could meet with me about unhoused residents, to get up to speed on that. And they're doing it for a civics class project. And so I encouraged them. I tried to explain where we're at, what we've already done in the past, and what I feel we could still use. And so I encouraged them to look into those things and hopefully come back to us with some ideas and maybe some actions that they actually have taken. So I'll leave it at that for tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Willie. And next, we have Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I'll report on two things. I think a lot of us, four of us, went to the California Cities Annual Conference. And I just want to report on one session I went, I think is very relevant to RENA, is human-centered design and why my city should care about it. When we're looking at RENA allocations, let's look at what human-centered design is and why is it relevant to the residents. And I was happy to report that I'm swearing as the board member with the Peninsula Division of Cal Cities, which we have represented from three counties, San Mateo, San Francisco, and Santa Clara County. One more thing is, I did attend the Silicon Valley Central Chamber of Commerce, the state of the city. They hosted right in Cupertino at the higher house. That's why I participated, where Senator Josh Becker and Assembly Member Alex Lee and, very interestingly, County Assessor Larry Stone, they reported on economic outlook and property tax issues. So that was very interesting.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Wei. Next, we have Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi, everyone. So last Saturday, I attended a rally in front of the city hall hosted by some CUSD parents to plead to not close schools during the pandemic. And later on, I find out that Novato Unified School District in Marin County actually held the legally suggested 7-Eleven Committee Citizens Advisory Meeting since January. Yet, after several meetings in May, they decided to not close schools in the middle of pandemic because of the psychological effect that will have on children. And they, they are also a revenue-limited district and very, with very, even worse financial situation than we are. But then they, their superintendent said they want to focus on recovering and attracting more students back to the school district rather than further dividing the community. So the school board will make a decision next Thursday. This is an issue that I've been working on recently. There is no good decision, but I am asking for transparency, accountability, and genuine community engagement before the board.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. So we'll go on to Councilmember Moore.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Paul. And I just wanted to clarify. So were you saying that you were able to execute a letter on your own behalf for AB 367? Was that correct?
Yes, I wrote it on my own behalf, and I wanted to disclose that to council and to the public. It is worded differently from the other letters and follow-on to the LRC's work. I specify that this is written only on behalf of the mayor's office.
Okay, okay. And thank you. So I did, as you know, I did meet with some of the students from Cupertino High School. At around 5:46 this evening, I received their slide deck. I believe they were not able to present. They had some more information to share with us. But what was most important at this time was that a position, either for or against AB 367, be logged in because the governor has until the 10th to sign this into law. And that, just to reiterate, would provide, be mandate that there would be feminine hygiene products available at grades six through 12. And that was part of the ask. And along with their request was that the city would look into providing some of these products, perhaps down the road in our public restrooms, and that location potentially, such as Main Street, could be considered. And it was suggested that the students perhaps write directly to the owners of Main Street Cupertino, so the public restroom there could potentially provide these products. So.
Okay, let's wrap up with the time.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so let's go to item number four. Item number four on our agenda is the report on committee assignments. And so I'll go by a show of hands. Let me just go ahead and go first. This is a bit of a different interim, two weeks since our last meeting because immediately after our last meeting on September 21st, they had a meeting in Sacramento by an organization known as the League of California Cities. And so I believe four out of five of the council members made it. And of course, Councilmember Willie has to tend to the day job at home during the week. And so we had a, I think, an excellent meeting there. Although technically, the League of California Cities is not a formal committee assignment. It does meet in its annual meeting of all the cities that are members, which are most of the cities in California. And so it was a very good opportunity to interface with, you know, other elected officials and other officials throughout the state. So during that time, the West Valley mayors and managers met. And of course, that was virtual. That was the time where I had an opportunity to speak briefly with our other cities in the West Valley and shared notes on things like what everyone is doing with regard to, you know, SB 9, for instance, not just as it pertains to the housing element, but potentially within the allowances of the law to implement our own, you know, city or town-based legislation prior to the end of the calendar year. So, you know, that's a good meeting. And I understand that we're in our city taking follow-up action on that particular item. On the 29th, my duties on the Valley Transportation Authority had me in a subcommittee on cybersecurity. And VTA had a cybersecurity attack. There was ransom demanded. Some Bitcoin, you know, was paid earlier in the year, right before Bitcoin plummeted. So that was, you know, rather satisfying to see to a degree. But in the aftermath of that, we're actually trying to see what we can do to beef up all of the, you know, various protections and making sure that we don't have, you know, another attack like that. Subsequent to that, the VTA board met. That was basically very clerical. Given our current meeting situation, agencies have to, on a month-by-month basis at this point, every 30 days specifically, meet in order to empower our ability to meet virtually. And so I actually had a question about that immediately after the 29th. But lo and behold, I did receive from our staff our draft agenda at that point, and I realized that they had already put that on there and that that's on our consent calendar for tonight to empower our ability to have the virtual meeting like we have this evening for the upcoming 30-day period. So next, we have Councilmember Moore for report outs on committee assignments.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I just want to mention that I was also at the League of California Cities Annual Conference. And for the previous two years, I had attended the Planning Commission conferences. And it was quite a bit different feel between the two. And I really appreciated getting to see the difference after having attended the Planning Commission ones. I really enjoyed the large expo hall, getting to speak to many of our vendors that we've seen some of these names come through, and they provide information. They had all sorts of demonstration areas, like the concrete that gets smoothed out and rather than having to break up all the concrete and reform it and cost more and then different pavement demonstrations and playground materials. There were crosswalks, some new kind of, to me, kind of new inventions on how to get the crosswalk being lit at night problem solved, which I thought was pretty innovative, and maybe there's someplace where we could use that in the future. One meeting in particular stuck out to me, and it was tackling the housing crisis, role of local leaders. They had representatives from West Sacramento, Palm Springs, Culver City, I believe. And one of the things that really stuck out was that our situation with our SB 35 project has not been verbalized widely. And what I'm hearing are communities which are upset about their SB 35 projects, but by comparison, they are so much smaller. And they'll talk about how maybe 150 units are coming in by right, whereas we have this project, which is almost 10 million square feet, and the 2,400 units by right. So I do hope that we have a voice in the future that other people get to know that there, that some of these projects that they're very upset about are so much different from what we're experiencing here and let people know how far the way the law is written can be stretched with regards to the size of a project. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Next, we have Councilmember Willie.
Yeah. Okay, so this time, it's the regular meeting of the Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Authority. Last time, I reported that there had been a jamming event going on in the South County. And so in our meeting this time, we actually got the complete details. And again, this is the emergency response team for the entire region. And individuals that felt they were running systems. And so the update is that it not only the emergency communication system, but it was also air traffic control. So the FBI got involved. They got search warrants, and they have shut it down. But I think this goes to, you know, let us all know, times have changed. We all need to be on the, be aware. You know, Mayor Paul talked about the other event that had happened in ransom being paid. Times have changed. So hopefully, we can, you know, address these as they arise. And I'll leave it at that for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next, we have Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi. On the 27th of September, we had the Audit Committee meeting. And then we voted to increase the frequency from four meetings to eight meetings since we have an internal audit coming up, many things to discuss. And we also will be adding a special meeting to review the budget format again, and also review the web interface. So if public would like to make our budget more accessible to the public, please give us comments on how we can make it more accessible to you. And I represented the city as a delegate for the League of Cities Conference. At the very end of the meeting, there is one rep from every city. And we voted on revised bylaw and two resolutions. The League of Cities revised the bylaw so that the board will now also consist of a representative from each of the caucuses, the Women's Caucus, the API Caucus, and the LGBTQ Caucus and Latino Caucus. And then there were some oppositions for that. And mainly, it's because each of these caucuses have not actually reached out to the members because many, many Latino members don't even get information from their Latino caucus. So they object because that rep doesn't really represent. So they they object because that rep doesn't represent the entire membership. So there is some improvement to be done on the structure of caucus. And the two resolutions, one is a result to both of these resolutions are proposed by cities. And one of them is they would like support so that we would request the state to get the Caltrain to clean up the get funding to clean up railroad tracks because there are liters and it could be dangerous to the train and residents nearby. That was approved. The second one is relevant to Cupertino is a sales tax redistribution that will redistribute the sales tax to the point of purchase rather than the point of the warehouse. So a lot of cities with warehouse will be losing revenue. So for that one, the they voted to postpone it so that there will be more discussion next year. And I.
Okay, we'll wrap up.
The government also voted, the government vetoed this bill that's going to have the redistribution too. Yeah.
Okay, thanks very much. And finally, we have Councilmember Wei.
Very briefly, so to follow on the Cal Cities Conference, I want to follow through with Vice Mayor Chow for the API. I joined API Caucus and Witness Caucus, I think, representation. And Cal Cities Board is very important for these two. And and of course, LGBTQ and the Latino Caucus. And also to follow up, Councilmember Moore, the expo is is very interesting. And we walk around and talk to a lot of vendors, and a lot of them recognize Cupertino City. So I collect a bag of goodies and drop it out of the city hall and hope our staff will enjoy them and recognize some of our vendors. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Councilmember Wei. All right, so we are on to item five now. And item five is a city manager update. And that is to receive our city manager's update on emergency response efforts as well as other city business. Greg, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Two brief updates, first on the COVID response. The situation continues to get slightly better. California is the only state at the moderate level of transmission. The seven-day average of cases in Santa Clara County has actually dropped from just under two hundred to one sixty-five. So that's moving in the right direction. And Cupertino continues to have the lowest case rate per hundred thousand residents in Santa Clara County. Testing has resumed in Cupertino. We've had two days and we have another one coming on Monday, October eighteenth. These are run by the county at the Cupertino Senior Center. And on October fourth, we actually had four hundred tests given. And what was interesting is that a hundred and thirty of those were children under the age of eighteen who had expected exposure. So it's helping all ages of our population. There is continuing news and movement on vaccination booster shots. And residents are encouraged to pursue boosters when they're eligible to do so. One item that has not changed is masks are still required in Santa Clara County for indoor wearing, whether you're vaccinated or not. So any use of city facilities, restaurants, and the like, except when you're actively eating or drinking, you need to wear a mask, and that continues to be the law of the county. Moving to more positive news, we have a number of events coming up that I wanted to share with the council and community. Shakespeare in the Park returns to the Memorial Park Amphitheater this weekend on October eighth, ninth, and tenth at four P M with the performance of Pericles, Prince of Tyre. And it's approximately a ninety-minute show and admission is free. We also have occurring this Saturday, Bobatino from noon to three P M. And it's the Youth Activity Board will be hosting the event for Boba Milk tea with Boba Milk tea for students eighth through twelfth grades. Pre-registration is required, and it is to support mental health outreach and awareness and access to resources. On October sixteenth, we have the Diwali Festival coming at Memorial Park from eleven A M to six P M. And it's the Festival of Lights that is being co-hosted by the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce and will have multicultural music, dance, art, and food. Admission to that is also free. Last announcement is Monster Mash coming up on Friday, October twenty-ninth from seven to eight thirty P M. And this kid-friendly Halloween bash is for parents and children where the children are twelve years old or younger. And I mention that now because pre-registration is required at the city Parks and Recreation Site. So just wanted to encourage families to register for Monster Mash. That concludes the staff's report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Interim City Manager. Let's go on to the consent calendar. Those are items six through eight on our agenda. I don't see any hands raised with regard to the consent calendar, either from the public or from the council at this time. Let me give people a moment if they do wish to pull an item. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and ask council, would anyone like to move items six through eight on the consent calendar? Councilmember Moore?
So moved.
And Councilmember Wei?
Second.
Excellent. Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct the roll call vote on the consent calendar items six through eight.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
The mission carries unanimously.
Great. All right, we're on to public hearings. This is item number nine. It's the consideration of an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to uphold the Director of Community Development's approval of a two-story permit to allow a new two thousand nine hundred and ninety-two square foot two-story two-story home with a seven hundred and forty-six square foot attached accessory dwelling unit and a minor residential permit to allow a new one hundred and fifteen square foot second-story balcony. And so I'll go ahead and begin the public hearing. And the first thing I'll ask is if any of the members of council had any site visits or communications with respect to this item after the Planning Commission heard it. Councilmember Moore, did you have anything to report?
I did go visit the site, and I did not speak to the residents there, but I did go out in and look at it. And I just have a brief comment on the on the staff report. It would help me if the North Arrow was placed on every single drawing to orient myself. It would have made it a little bit easier. But other than that, I could figure it out once I got there. Thank you.
Okay, and so let me briefly go over the flow of the hearing. Now that we've had the site visits reported out, the staff reports and recommendations will be presented. We on council will ask clarifying questions after that. There will be an opportunity for the appellee to make a presentation that's up to ten minutes. The council will ask questions after that. The applicant will be provided an opportunity to respond with council questions after that. And so following that, we'll open up the public hearing for public speakers. And public speakers, as usual, will have the three minutes to speak each. And then following that, I'll bring it back with the applicant and appellant being provided the opportunity to respond to the public before council deliberations begin, typically with a motion for opening discussion. Okay, so we're at the beginning of this process. We have staff reports and communications, rather recommendations, not communications. And so we'll bring it over to Pew from our Planning Department. Pew, would you like to present or introduce the presenter for this item?
I will be presenting the presenter for this item. Erica Poveta, Associate Planner, who will make the presentation. Hello again. I am Erica Poveta, Associate Planner. And tonight I'll be presenting on the appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a two-story permit and minor residential permit. File numbers are dash twenty twenty dash zero three five and R N dash twenty twenty dash zero two three. The project is located at fifteen oh six Primrose Way in the Montevista South neighborhood. The site is zoned as single-family residential, R one six, and is surrounded by other R one six zoned properties with a mix of single-story and two-story homes. The project consists of a two-story permit to allow for a new two thousand nine hundred and ninety-two square foot two-story home with a seven hundred and forty-six square foot attached A D U as well as a minor residential permit to allow for a second-story balcony. The single-family residential or R one ordinance requires both permit types to undergo administrative review with the decision made by the Director of Community Development. The code also requires any appeals for these projects to be heard by Planning Commission, followed by City Council. For context, I'll provide a brief overview of the project timeline with more details available in the staff report. On November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, the applicant submitted an application for proposed two-story residence with attached A D U and second-story balcony. Staff conducted a review of the proposed project and found it to be complete on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. The required two-week public comment period took place from March fifth through the nineteenth, and we received eleven comments during this time. The comments included concerns about the size and design of the project, privacy impacts of the two-story windows and balconies, size of the windows, and concerns that the A D U would be converted to the main home. Staff responded to each public comment and included a summary of comments and responses in the action letter. In response to the comments received, the applicant also revised the project's scope and design to reduce the total building height and entry feature height, slightly reduce the total F A R, and reconfigure the elevations and design to be more compatible with the neighborhood. The Director of Community Development then approved the revised design on April nineteenth. And an action letter with the director's decision was sent to the applicant, property owner, and anyone who commented. Staff then received two appeals of the director's decision during the subsequent two-week appeal period. And Planning Commission heard the appeals and upheld the director's approval on June twenty-second. In July, staff then received two appeals of the Planning Commission's decision during the appeal period. Staff received an appeal from the property owner of fourteen ninety-three Poppy Way and a separate appeal from the neighboring property owner of fourteen seventy-nine Poppy Way. In this slide, the appellants' properties are shown in red with fifteen oh six Primrose Way shown. No, I'm sorry. The appellants are shown in yellow and the project is shown in red. While detailed information is provided in the staff report, the next slides will summarize the three different bases for both appeals with staff's responses. The first basis of appeal is regarding the mass and bulk of the proposed residence. Appellant Vadia states that Primrose Way is a community of single-story homes and that a new two-story home would destroy the look and feel of the neighborhood. Staff conducted a review of the existing homes within a one-block radius surrounding the project area as well as a larger portion of the Montevista South neighborhood in a separate study. Both reviews indicated that the surrounding neighborhood is transitional and has a mix of both single-story and two-story residences. The figure here highlights the two-story residences in yellow within the immediate surrounding area. Thirty-seven point five percent of the surrounding homes are two-story residences with an average floor area of approximately twenty-eight hundred square feet. The proposed two thousand nine hundred and ninety-two square foot two-story home is therefore comparable in size to the existing homes in the surrounding area. It's also important to note that the neighborhood does not have a single-story overlay. Therefore, the city cannot require the home to be limited to a single story in this neighborhood at this time. Additionally, the project complies with all development regulations for R one six zoned properties, including floor area ratio, first-floor building envelope, setbacks, and building height. The proposed attached A D U also complies with the site development regulations of the A D U ordinance, including setbacks, height, and size. As mentioned, the applicant undertook several design changes during the project decision period prior to approval in order to address some of the the public comments. On this slide, we'll see the previous design of the home. And approved design changes include a reduction to the overall building height from slightly over twenty-five feet to twenty-three feet. And I'd like to point out that a maximum of twenty-eight feet is allowed. A reduction to the entry feature height, slight slight reduction to F A R, breaking up the previously proposed two-story bay window feature by removing heavy stone materials and adding ornamental features, reducing the visual mass of the exposed second-story portion by increasing first-floor roof height, making window forms more consistent throughout the design, simplifying roof lines for the first and second floors, and simplifying the garage door. And together, these alterations create a more harmonious project in terms of scale and design within the surrounding neighborhood. The second basis for appeal is the potential privacy impacts. The appellants point out that there's a five-foot grade difference between Poppy Way and Primrose Way with homes on Primrose having a grade that is five feet higher than the homes on Poppy. Additionally, they have privacy concerns regarding A D U windows on the first floor, second-story balcony, and second-story windows. And the appellants also state that the privacy plantings will not be sufficient mitigation for the project. The R one ordinance implements regulations such as building envelope, building setbacks, and height limitations to ensure the provision of light air and a reasonable level of privacy to residences. The project complies with the R one ordinance's height limitations by proposing a twenty-three-foot residence where maximum building height of twenty-eight is allowed. And the code does measure total building height from natural grade of the existing property, but it does not account for grade differences between adjoining homes. The project therefore complies with the height limitations of the R one ordinance. The project also exceeds all minimum rear yard setback requirements for the first and second floors as well as the balcony. The project proposes a first-floor rear yard setback of twenty-eight feet, five inches, where only twenty feet is required. A second-story rear yard setback of thirty-four and a half feet, where twenty-five feet is required, and a rear yard balcony setback of over twenty-six and a half feet, where twenty feet is required. The R one ordinance does allow property owners the ability to construct second-story windows and balconies as long as privacy screenings are installed and maintained. The applicant has proposed seven laurels nobilis, which is one of the city's approved privacy planting species, to screen the second-story balcony and second-story windows along the rear property line. Privacy plantings for the right and left property lines are not required since the applicant has obtained a signed privacy waiver form from the adjacent property owners. And as announced, the code does not require privacy plantings for the first floor. Privacy plantings are considered protected trees and shall be protected and maintained by a record covenant against the property. There's there are several other points raised by the raised in the appeal. And one of the appellants states that the A D U is planned to be a separate unit, even though it's attached to the main residence. Over the long run, the applicant has not demonstrated that the A D U and main residence will continue to be separate. The proposed A D U complies with state law as well as the development regulations in the A D U ordinance. And as required by the ordinance, the attached A D U must remain separate from the principal dwelling unit. And this requirement has also been added as a condition of approval and will be recorded with a covenant placed on the property. Lastly, one appellant states that the two-story proposal obscures his views of the Cupertino hills and skyline. However, present preservation of views is not a stated purpose of the R one ordinance. Prior to this meeting, ten notices were mailed to adjacent property owners and a site sign was posted on-site per code. Staff, the Director of Community Development, and Planning Commission have found that the project complies with all R one ordinance requirements. Furthermore, the applicant has revised the project design to reflect the concerns of the surrounding neighbors and to be more more harmonious with the neighborhood. Staff therefore recommends that City Council adopt the proposed draft resolutions to find the proposed actions exempt from seque and to deny. to find the proposed actions exempt from sequela and to deny the appeals and uphold the Planning Commission's decision approving the applications. I'm available for questions, and we also have both appellants, as well as the applicant and property owner, who are, I believe, all prepared to make a short presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you, Erica. Are there any questions at this time from Council of Erica and the presentation? Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, uh, thanks, Erica, for pretty good, uh, pretty detailed, uh, um, presentation. The questions that I've got, also I'll start with, um, the concern about the ADU maybe at some point being integrated into the house. What constitutes separation? The in is the ADU allowed door access to use restrooms, to use kitchen, should they want to? Or is it truly a solid wall?
So per the ADU ordinance, um, no access between the two units is allowed. Additionally, I believe that, uh, from building code, the wall must be fire-rated. Um, but our ordinance is, uh, fairly straightforward with the fact that there is no internal access between the two units.
So the the next question then is with the privacy screen. I believe when you showed us the top plan view of the, uh, adjacent neighbors. So one neighbor is directly behind, which would be addressed by the privacy plant planting on the back, uh, property line. The neighbor that would be one house over, though, would apparently, you know, it seems to me he's not going to receive any privacy planting. Maybe you can pop that picture back up showing the top view. And then the question becomes, does privacy planting not apply to, uh, adjacent houses behind? You said that the adjacent neighbors, directly adjacent, did not require, uh, privacy planting, but yet they're going to have an outdoor, uh, uh, deck on the second story, which conceivably would be looking over in the yard of the adjacent rear neighbor. Are are they not entitled to privacy screening?
Sure. So we do have, um, I think I'll switch between, uh, the two different slides here. Um, so these two neighbors here did submit a signed privacy waiver. So privacy is, privacy plantings is waived for this neighbor here, as well as here. And then we do have what's this one? We do have, um, privacy plantings all along the rear. So I believe that the, um, the other appellant would be in this corner here, which would be screened by this corner planting.
Yeah, if you could go back to the previous picture.
Sure.
And, you know, I think it's a forty-five, whereas in the picture you just showed us, you know, it just went to the property corner. But if if the privacy screening is for the, uh, forty-five degree, then it would be looking in the adjacent rear property owner's yard. You know, the the privacy screening would only capture a corner of his his property. So is the question then still becomes, is the adjacent house not considered, uh, for privacy planting?
Sure. So, um, we do look at adjacent, uh, homes and impacts to adjacent homes in terms of privacy plantings. However, um, this adjacent home here, one four nine three, will be protected by the row of laureus nobilis in the rear, as well as, um, these two here only connect at a point, uh, rather than an entire property line, and this home should be connect, should be protected, sorry, um, by this corner tree that was shown on the previous slide.
Well, okay, go to your other picture. I just want to be sure that
Sure.
we're not going to, um, miss something that somebody's going to have to. If you look at this picture there, you've got the, uh, the lower diagonal at the forty-five degrees, and the upper diagonal is only like maybe thirty degrees. If you were to make that upper diagonal to match the lower diagonal, which, uh, forty-five degrees would clearly miss the privacy planting.
Okay, sure. So I would like to point out, perhaps this slide might be a bit confusing. Um, this red line here is not, um, the view shed. This is just, um, arrows for this text box. Sorry, text box. Um, so this red line is not the, not the view shed, which is actually a thirty-degree angle.
Oh, okay.
Correct. Thirty-degree angle. So sorry about if if this slide can, uh, caused any confusion with the view shed.
Yeah, because it sure seemed like that was the requirement and only one side
Understood.
was getting the full freedom. Okay.
Right, right.
That that's my questions for now. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Councilmember Willie. Um, so I I'm putting people on three minutes, and I I ceded over a couple of my minutes because I I think a lot of these informational, um, questions are are good for, um, you know, the group and likely are to answer some questions that other council members may have as well. So next, we have Councilmember Moore, and I'll just remind everyone that uh, right now it's clarifying questions with regard to the presentation. And, uh, we'll deliberate, there will be the time for deliberation after, um, we've heard from everyone, including the public. So Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you. Um, I was just concerned about the trees and what would be removed and and altered um, with this laureus nobilis, um, Saratoga, which I guess is a is a bay laurel of some sort. Uh, I was wondering if someone could give an estimate of what the height is on these, uh, there's a juniper that's mentioned and an existing, um, like lagar lagar stromia indica, uh, a- along the rear property. Because I I did notice the trees, I could see them up over the house, so I was wondering what the size is. And then with regards to the laureus nobilis, uh, what what I'm seeing is a very slow growth rate on that tree, so I want to make sure that that's something that the that both both parties are are agreeing to. And, uh, because there's there are issues with, when you share a tree, um, hedge essentially with your neighbor, depending on its growth pattern, it could be something that is a is a maintenance issue for the neighbor uh, on the o- other side of the property down the road. So I'm wondering if that if that was agreed upon. And then also on trees, on the, um, on the street side on Primrose, there is a very large existing, um, fifty-inch tree and, uh, and then an existing, uh, birch. I'm wondering if the intention is to retain those or or alter those in the future, um, because one of them is was really quite large. Thank you.
Sorry, I have too many screens and could not find the unmute. Um, so in terms of the growth rate of the laureus nobilis, we're looking at, um, well, with all of our city-approved privacy trees, the intention is to have partial screening within, uh, three years. Um, with the laureus nobilis particularly, the maximum height ranges anywhere from fifteen to forty feet. Um, and then in terms of the the existing trees, um, I do not recall that, um, the property owners will use the existing trees as privacy protection. Um, I believe that at least one of them is, uh, not evergreen, which is one of our, uh, requirements. However, there is, um, there's always the option for the affected property owners to modify the the required, um, privacy protection trees. So we can either go with, um, what is being proposed, which is the seven, uh, laureus nobilis, or if the adjacent affected property owner wishes to modify, uh, we do have a modification form, um, and they could indicate specifically how they wish to modify on that form. Uh, the privacy protection trees and measures will be finalized, uh, prior to building permit issuance.
Thank you, Erica. And about the the, um, the trees in the front parkway, uh, but but when you mentioned modification, that concerns me. If there if if there was a way that they could modify the ADUs such that the, what looks like a living room, when you enter in the front door on the left, which is, uh, which would have the firewall behind it, if there if there is the ability to modify the plan at some point to, um, take that, the living room space and add it into a more traditional floor plan where you have the living room and the dining room, uh, upon entering the home. Is that something that, if they were to modify that, would it have to come to council, uh, to make that change? Or is that something that could just be, um, done on their own through an administrative hearing, for instance?
Um, sure. So to clarify, uh, the modification that I was referring to was modification for the privacy protection measures, um, as in the the privacy protection trees or not the mitigation, um, impacts for that. But when it comes to the ADU, um, it it still remains that the ADU must be separate, a completely separate unit with no internal connection to the main home. So if we see that in building permits, um, we would not approve it. We would require that they modify it to have no internal connection at all to the main home.
Okay, so my question is, though, if they wanted to have a modification to that plan and they wanted to incorporate and just change it, they want to change the front room and incorporate it into the 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 main house, how would that be done?
Sure. So if we are, um, the front home, or sorry, the front room of the ADU.
Right, right.
So I I don't actually think that would be possible because I don't think that the main home would therefore meet the setback regulations of the R1. Um, right now, the ADU has, um, a more relaxed setback, uh, restrictions, and so that's what allows for the four-foot setback on that side. If it were to be converted to the main home, um, they would need to, um,
Remove it. Okay.
part over.
Okay, okay, perfect. That's that's what I wanted to know about that. Okay. Um, and did you have any answer?
I'm I'm sorry, I don't have any more time to seat over, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you.
So, um, let let me move on. We're, um, I think we're probably underallocating the time for this item. We, uh, initially anticipated half an hour. Um, but let let me go on to, uh, Councilmember Wei, followed by Vice Mayor Chow for clarifying questions of the presenters.
Yeah, I have just one very simple clarification, uh, clarification questions. On the two sites, um, that signed the waiver for privacy trees, they're the owners, right? They're not renters.
Correct. We verify that it's the homeowner.
Okay, great.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember Wei. Vice Mayor Chow.
I, it seems the main concern is the privacy screening. So one comment, uh, the applicant s- uh, was concerned is in in case these trees, uh, dies, are they required to replant it to make sure that it's of a certain height? What's the policy on that? These trees do die.
Correct, yes. Um, yes, no, that's a great question. Um, so all, uh, privacy trees are considered protected trees by the protective tree ordinance. Um, any removal would require, um, a tree removal permit as well as replacement of of the protected trees. Um, including if they die, uh, they would be required to be replaced.
And if the property owner doesn't replace it, what happens then?
It it would likely become a code enforcement issue at that point.
So it could be, um, the neighbor could file a complaint and the city can, um, fine the property owner so that they they will replant it, okay?
That's correct.
And then do they have to be of a certain height so that they they provide that screening service or purpose, or they don't have to be in order to not get a code violation citation?
Um, for replacement trees, uh, yes, they do need to be of a certain height.
So how how, where is that regulated?
Sure, it is within our, um, okay, there we go. We, it is within our, um, R1 ordinance. So, uh, the R1 ordinance states that where required planting is removed or dies, it must be replaced within thirty days with privacy trees of similar size as the trees being replaced. Um, so if you remove a tree that is, say, ten feet, um, that's a privacy tree, then it should be replaced with a similar, a tree of similar height.
Okay, so, um, I think one concern is of the second-story balcony. How tall is that? What's the height of that balcony? And then would would they, would we require higher privacy tree when the balcony is installed versus when there is no balcony?
Sure. So for, um, for this particular project, I believe the the finished floor of the balcony is approximately eleven or eleven and a half feet from finished grade. Um, and for the laureus nobilis, they are considered a privacy shrub. Any of our, uh, required privacy shrubs have to have a minimum height of six feet when planted. So so they do meet the code of, um, of planting the shrubs.
Six feet? That's even shorter than the fence. And so how is that a privacy screening?
So the purpose of our privacy screening is to provide a partial screening within three years.
But the tree is is six feet. That's, most fences are six to eight feet. So this this tree is shorter than the fence, so it doesn't provide any screening for the neighboring property. So I don't understand. And then my question is, do we require a higher privacy screening, uh, pri- higher tree height for someone who are installing a balcony?
We do not have different, um, height requirements if it is a balcony versus second story.
So the basic height requirement for the privacy tree is only six feet?
Uh, that is for the privacy shrubs. Privacy trees are required to be eight feet at least.
So why are we not requiring privacy trees here?
We provide, um, the applicant the option to choose either our, from our list of privacy trees or privacy shrubs.
Oh, so if they have chosen privacy trees, that will be two feet higher?
Correct.
Okay, um, do I have more time regarding the ADU?
Oh, no, you do not.
Okay.
But, um, I, the applicant has, um, an opportunity to speak after the appellee, the appellant, I should say, um, gives a presentation, so you you can ask your questions at that point. So at this point, we have the appellant, um, with a presentation, um, that could be provided up to ten minutes. And, um, let let me clarify this with the city attorney. Is it the appellant or the appellee that has provided the opportunity here? So would it be the applicant or the person or parties appealing the Planning Commission decision?
So so the the appellants would, uh, have the opportunity to present first, uh, followed by the applicant.
Okay, so yeah, that's what I thought it was. I happened to see appellee in my in my notes, uh, however. So thank you for that clarification. So the appellant, at this point, has an opportunity to provide a presentation. And then, uh, again, council has the, uh, chance to ask questions of the appellant after their presentations, after which time the applicant has an opportunity to respond. So, uh, would the appellant like to provide a presentation at this point?
And, uh, I don't have any presentations. I just have some statement I'd like to make.
Okay, welcome.
Okay. And 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 thank you to the, uh, mayors, vice mayor, and all the, uh, city council members. And I am the the homeowner of, uh, one four nine three Poppy Way. And, um, uh, I I think thank you, Vice Mayor, to bring up a lot of questions. And actually, that's also my concern too. That my biggest concern now is not the size of the the property, but is my privacies. And, uh, based on what the Vice Mayor just kept asking, that currently that the 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 privacy screening plan is not going to provide me any privacies until a couple of years later. And as some of you brought up, that, uh, if a tree die, they have opportunity to replant it. But that going to be another years or two before that my privacy can be can be, uh, recovered. So so I I really like, uh, our council members, my mayor, vice mayor, to 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 think reconsider the decisions. And, uh, but maybe that they'd be able to change their, the applicants. The decisions and uh but maybe that they be able to change their the applicants, their their plans. To to remove the backyard bulk facing balconies. And I I think that the the from your that the from from your facing balcony will have much better view. Than the backyard facing balcony that looking on my properties or my neighbors' properties. And another thing that I really uh request is that whether the second floor's back facing window can be uh can make the seal height. Five feet or higher, so that can provide me a better privacies, thank you.
Uh the appellant has provided up to ten minutes, is there anybody else on uh behalf of the appellant that wanted to speak? Uh you're only at about um one and a half minutes into that ten minutes. If not, I'll uh provide an opportunity for our city council to ask questions of the appellant. And I see that Vice Mayor Chow has her hand raised, Vice Mayor Chow.
All right, did you want the second appellant to speak now or?
Uh yes, it would have to be the total of ten minutes at this point, so.
Okay, okay, so can I I apologize, I didn't understand the question, Mayor Dasi, can I then uh continue?
No, please do, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, uh well Eric uh Eric has already given a good uh presentation of uh the position there and I think I've already articulated on my side. I live uh adjacent forty five degrees uh to the left of the uh the property in discussion here. I live in a two-story uh building. Uh I still do have an objection to the bulk of the building which is being proposed. I still feel it uh destroys the look and feel of the uh neighborhood. All the houses on that side of the road are single story. On our side of the road, there is a mixture of single and double story. But that is really, really driven by the five foot difference between both roads. And that five foot difference, I think, is a a pretty critical discussion we all need to have. Now, even though uh even though uh the height of the building has been reduced down to twenty-three feet. You know, we still have this uh five foot gradient we all need to uh speak about. From where I stand, um you know, if I look at the architectural drawings. The uh the balcony itself, if you have a six foot person standing on that balcony. Um they can see above my second floor windows, all of them. They can see all of my windows, they can see my first floor windows, they have complete access to my entire backyard. There's absolutely nothing preventing them. We've talked about uh privacy trees, um but again, that's three years away. And there's obviously discussions about how high these uh these uh privacy uh trees or or bushes will actually grow. I mean, one thing uh not mentioned, I think, by Erica is, you know, we do have utility lines running along the uh. Along the back of the property, they're at a certain height, which is below, I believe, it's below the height of the balcony. Well, you know, uh I believe there are restrictions in terms of how high you can actually grow these plants uh near utility lines. I I haven't seen any consideration there either from uh the planning department. So, you know, at the end of the day, I have I have very great concerns about the bulk of the property, the five foot difference. And the and 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 the sheer um privacy concerns into my home. Even the ADU, um leaving aside, you know, six foot fences or seven foot fences, the size of those windows is in fact very large. Uh the height, you know, the top of those windows, you can look directly into my backyard. Um and again, that's that's another major concern from my side. So overall, you know, I I think we're kind of ignoring a lot of the privacy concerns we have here. Uh in terms of the sheer access that the applicant has into our property, into our bedrooms. Irres- irrespective of uh tree plantings or or whatever else Erica presented. Uh so I'm very concerned there as well. I'm still concerned, by the way, I heard Erica's line of arguments, I still have very concerns about the ADU as well. Um you know, I still haven't seen major evidence that over the long term, uh this is not going to be abused. Um sure, I mean, you know, short term, they can do things, but over the long term, I I still haven't seen the any evidence that uh. It's not going to be abused. So overall, you know, uh Mayor Chairman and and the rest of you, privacy is a major concern. There is absolutely nothing I have seen so far which mitigates all of my concerns whatsoever, thank you.
Thank you very much, and so I will take it back to our city council now for any questions uh of the appellant. And so Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi, on the first appellant suggested uh made a suggestion about the window, I didn't catch that. Um someone repeat.
Yes, uh I I'm I I'm requesting that whether they could uh reduce the size of the second floor windows. And make the the seal height five feet or higher.
Uh seal height, what do you mean by that?
This means that the 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 windows will be higher, so that they won't be able to, just like a uh.
Or make the the bottom of the window higher on the second floor?
Yeah.
So what's the concern with the ADU windows? It's the first floor, even if it's high, you cannot really see.
Well, the ADU windows are very tall. Uh as I say, going five five foot grade difference, okay? Please bear in mind, there's a five foot grade difference, even with these tall windows, you have access into my backyard and into my windows.
But someone is not going to be climbing a ladder to see from top of of the window, right, they will.
I I I'm I'm not going to presume anything, Vice Mayor, I'm I'm not responsible for what people do in their homes.
Hmm, so you are concerned of this, the window is too tall, you would like that to be reduced?
Yes, please, and I would like the balcony eliminated.
Okay.
I would like the two-story as well, turn into a one-story, but I think that's a a further discussion.
Uh thank you Vice Mayor, and next we have Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, I was wondering um if uh if staff would be able to pull up the. Uh quarter inch rear elevation east side uh to take a look at and. It's sheet A six of the plan set. And I'm just, I I'm wanting to see, thank you so much. Uh I I wanted to see see the windows, it looks like there we have some French doors, glass, French doors. I I know they're being shown with with screens, but uh um they those would be clear glass. Uh it does someone know off the top of their head the the width of that um second story? Uh addition up there, the second story, how wide that is across? I know there was a a good bit of uh uh care taken to uh reduce the second story bulk. Uh I'm just wondering how much um they ended up with for that for that room, it does not look very wide to me, does anyone?
I I I looked at this uh the floor plan, uh council member Moore, it looks to be about sixteen feet, four and a half inches on the floor there.
Okay, okay, and it and it seemed like they could have gone much wider if I understand the uh setback rules, okay, okay. Um and they've already scaled it back uh quite a bit, um so if they. To me, if they went to the five foot sill height on the windows, you'd still have the French doors with the full. Uh full full floor to ceiling window, that would be correct.
Yes.
Okay, um and uh there, I have seen some instances where for privacy, the the. Um the railing has been increased and it looks here as though it's a decorative wrought iron. Railing which would have openings, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay, um and so I'm just kind of wondering uh with regards to privacy. What if there's things that could be done um with that configuration? Um making it uh some somehow opaque, if that would be helpful. Um just just wondering what what our options are for for asks.
Okay, Councilmember Moore, I need to remind you that we're at questions for the appellant at this point, um I I have allowed some.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh I I don't see further hands raised for uh questions for the appellant. So let me ask the uh appellee, the applicant, if they would like to um speak at this point. Is the applicant here and would they like to speak, I I see a head nod uh from one of our one of our screens, so so welcome. Um similar, uh you'll have a similar amount of time, up to ten minutes to um to speak on this item. And you'll need to unmute your microphone if you wanted to. To be heard.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, our microphone was.
Okay.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, we can, welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
The respected Cupertino City Mayor, council member and Cupertino residents, good evening. I'm Sean Happeas and my husband, Parikam, have been peacefully living with our neighbors at fifteen oh six Pringles Way. Cupertino since two thousand and five, and our family got bigger, my elderly parents living with me. My children, my daughter-in-law, as well as grandkids on the way. This small house cannot accommodate my big family, this is necessary to build this house, it's not a luxury. We have discussed with our neighbors and and have got overwhelming support for the construction. Direct neighbor on left and to the right of the home have oiled and declared the support for the rebuilding of this home. Along with our four or twelve others member from the Primrose Way have offered their support with the ladder and I submitted to the city. Next slide, please. We submitted our first design to this.
Okay.
And go September two thousand and twenty, that met all Cupertino City rules, regulation and code. And was approved by the Cupertino City Planning Commission. After this first submission, we had multiple revision of the design to respect and meet the back neighbor concern, along with the city's comment. We modified the house design, reducing the height twenty-three feet, even the city allowed twenty-eight feet. ADU eight hundred to seven hundred forty-six square feet, along with the privacy plan. We finally received the city approval, April two thousand and twenty-one, after much background for the discussion. However, now here we are in the cold due to the same neighbors complaining again, next slide, please. Our back neighbor complained that Primrose Way is a community of the single-story home, this is for completely false statement. For two-story home, house number twelve sixty, twelve seventy-two and thirteen twenty, and beginning of the Pringles Way and then Good Drive. Is another two-story home and six two-story home in front of our house, which one is the waterfront drive? And twenty-seven two-story home on the Poppy Way, which one is the back of my house? Additionally, there is a two two-story home recently built in our neighborhood, two thousand and eighteen. With the square feet four thousand eighty-six square feet and address is seven four one one Wildflower Way. There are many homes in our neighborhood that are big and two-story. Our final city approved plan, the first one only fifteen hundred fifty-one square feet, that is four hundred sixty-two square feet. Upstairs only nine hundred thirty square feet, with this square foot is not enough for my big family. I'm not requesting anything extra, the reason why I'm highlighting all this defined home. Is that I want to same right that other members of the community at the building in two-story home, next slide, please. Addressing the privacy concern, we hired landscape designer and submitted the privacy plan to the address our back neighbor concern directly. Although the lot of tall tree in our backyard that will block any view, please see the below the backyard trees. Next slide, please. After the city permit, we should be happy to put the sign in front of our house that state that we are building this house. But unfortunately, putting the sign means up that we have public hearing against our back neighbor, which makes us so upset and breaks our heart. Next slide, please. It shouldn't be this way, neighbors and members of our community should be good friend, while we should and offer support. We have met all the city rules, regulation, approved code, even have privacy plan to maintain our neighbor privacy. After meeting all the city's code, regulation and rules, if we cannot build this home. Then it will affect our neighbor's relationship, our community, it will be a bad example for our kids and next generation. We have such respected everything the city has told us and asked for us, along with other members. And our neighbors' comments, we truly appreciate you talking the time so to listen to us, next slide, please. So I humbly ask you all to bless us so that our dream take fusion. In fact, it will be valued addition to the neighborhood, a home is where lovely sight, memories are created. Friends always belong and laughter never end, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and at this point, does anyone on council have any questions of the applicant? Vice Mayor Chow.
Thank you for making so many improvements on your design already, uh working with the staff. To make the design much better. And I and thank you for the image of the backyard tree, so it looks like there is already quite um. Privacy screening already, so are you planning to keep those trees on? Or are they going to be replaced?
We we can keep this tree and they depend on this, the privacy plan, if there there's the back neighbor.
Yeah.
Back neighbor requested to keep the privacy plan, that's why we designed that one.
Whatever he likes it, we're gonna keep it, or if he likes it is, you know, the it depends on him. Because he's in respecting his concern and, you know, that's why we are here. And if he likes, we could keep it, and if he wants, we could take it out and put the new one also, it's fine with me.
And also, we are living sixteen years with them, and in sixteen year, we don't have any single.
Issue.
Issue on privacy or anything else, we can you can ask them, we don't have anything. If we live peacefully sixteen years, there is no privacy issue to. I don't think so there will be any privacy, but whatever they want, we can put that privacy plan on our backyard. If we can keep this tree, if they want the bigger tea, we can.
Whatever they like it, we will do that, that's fine.
That's we are saying from the beginning, and also for the city, we whatever city asks for, it is not one time. Everything we, the city what their request changes, what they commented, we we comply all their comment, whatever their request.
Design, outlook, everything, everything actually is like my house now is a totally different.
What we planned for you.
Which I could see the first designer right now is totally different house, but only thing because of the neighbor complaint. And he complained and we respected and we it changed everything, we everything we did it.
So I see that the shrub now is uh four to six feet above the fence, so it's much taller. And I wonder about the balcony, how important the balcony is that it's facing the backyard rather than the front? Um that's one of their requests, so what's in in, yeah, why is that important to you?
Right, uh we can consider that if there are requested, we can consider like uh if reduce the size. Because the front balcony is, we already changed the design, whatever the asks for, front is totally we changed. And now, if uh you the if you guys think that's we can reduce the balcony size, we can consider that.
Also, this is only just for beauties, not like I I don't think so, because we are working people and this is just just beauty for the house. So that's so and that's in the privacy plan.
You are not going to be in the backyard uh the balcony all day.
Yeah, that's fine, you know, you're not be because we are full-time worker, we don't have time, so we just, you know, the.
So you say you already have a front balcony already?
No, we don't have the one, only one.
You would consider maybe a smaller balcony in the back.
Yeah, if if you guys think, everybody thinks that's the ways go, we are considered, we did consider everything.
You want to be good.
Yeah, that's fine, we're gonna reduce the size, that's fine.
So I guess another concern is the second story window and uh. I I understand we want bigger windows and but for privacy, is it possible maybe the lower part of the part of the window is like?
That is really light.
So light comes in, but then you you don't see the bottom of part, but you see the sky, the beautiful, the nice sky.
Right, we 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 consider all this window too, we we changed the design. Right, we, we, we consider all this window too. We, we change the design, everything.
Um, so what did you say? You consider the?
Yeah, we, we changed the windows uh shape, things like that, whatever.
So they are, they are hoping that the, the bottom of the window could be a little higher. But I, I understand, maybe you, maybe the bottom part could be um a different design that.
Bottom part, like, we could do like, you know, the, right now is so many modern glass came out, right? We could put like, you know, kind of, you know, it's kind frosted glass or something, we could that, that thing also.
Part of that one.
Yeah, frosted glass will be nice, then, then it had provides privacy, but you, you get the light, so you could consider that.
Yeah.
Sure, Vice Mayor Chow, let me, let me check to see if anyone else on council has questions. Uh so um, I see Councilmember Wei.
So my question is, um, I can see that this house's design has been come, you know, changed, the window is smaller. And if we continue to ask they to change windows, the window sizes are standard. Uh I, I just think that. Um, I get the privacy concerns and I think I can see that they're very accommodating. But this house is absolutely conforming to all our standards even more. So and, and, and I think the neighbor's house is also two-story, uh that's um diagnosis. So I, I just think. It, it would be too much for us to continue to asking to, for them to reduce this, reduce that. Um, if it's conforming and they already did their job, I feel that they are pretty accommodating to the neighbors' request. They want to be good neighbors, so if they're willing to reduce the balcony a little bit just to accommodate. I, I just don't think the council has to, you know.
Council, councilor with question, questions of the applicant at this.
Yeah, question of the applicant, if so, um, i- i- if there are further reduce of the balconies, you are willing to do that, right?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, that, that I think, okay, that, that would just be my question.
Thank you. Councilmember More.
Yeah, it's, it's more to ask a favor. If, if I could look at the photograph of the backyard plantings uh one more time. Uh if that, if it's possible to have that image um brought back up. Um, I was curious because I thought I saw uh the beginnings of a row of cedars and I was curious about that. If I was noticing correctly. Okay, and are these, uh am I looking at a conical row of um cedars across the back?
Yes, yeah, yes.
Okay, and uh would you happen to know about how many that you have planted thus far?
Is the whole, whole backyard.
Okay, okay, and uh are they, are they situated such that they are not going to hit the wires as they grow?
Hmm, no.
It was there, actually, we did not put it.
Was for last sixteen years, we bought the house.
Okay, cuz I, I have seen those in, within neighborhoods and they can become quite tall. I just wanted to make sure that's what I was looking at. And that, that's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember More. Next we have Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, if, if Erica could put that uh top view of the planting plan, um. I think, uh, I'm thinking that uh Jatish is the diagonal house. And that's where I'm kind of concerned that, yes, I, I, I understand, you know, that um. Um, privacy concerns, the, the top view though, uh uh of the neighboring houses. Yeah, so, you know, if, if the uh, uh homeowner there could. Provide, you know, that privacy protection on the uh side of the east. Uh, at least as it's shown on our screen, you know, I think, you know, maybe like six feet or eight feet. Would really block the balcony from looking in his backyard, the diagonal house. Maybe with your mouse, uh.
This area here?
Yeah, that, that area, that area there would prevent the uh, the balcony, which um the uh homeowner would like to have. It'll keep it from being, I think, from um really uh exposing the, the neighbor, you know, his concern. And um, yeah, so, there's a, would the homeowner be willing to, to extend that up the side a little ways? To protect that rear neighbor?
Sure, sure. We can do that one.
That, that's great to hear, you know, I mean, yeah, there you go. I mean, uh, a couple of those there would, I think, really help. And if we, if we said, well, if you were the adjacent neighbor and he was building the house, just kind of trying to put you, yourself in his shoes. And the concern that, you know, he own his backyard, so.
Yeah, we'll do it.
Hey, we, whatever city so far asking, we never say no, we did.
Well, I, I, I don't want you to do it based on my ask. You know, it's up to the, it's up to the neighbor to say that he feels it would be helpful to him. I would be clearly saying that I, I would like to see that happen if he feels that it would be uh. Uh help to him and his privacy, which I think he would say, yeah. Thank you, thank you very much, yeah, appreciate.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Wei, your hand is still up. Did you have another follow-up question?
Yeah, I have one really quick question. As um, I, I'm a little concerned of the comment um from. I, I think you are all great neighbors, so you should really work together. Um, the com- comment I heard is there is no evident, evidence that you would not abuse the ADUs or. And I would like to say that you, can you have, you have other neighbors that could testify to your character that you would not abuse. Your, you know, ADUs and, and so I think that would be very good if you could provide that, cuz it looks like you have great neighbors.
Sure.
Okay, uh great, thank you, uh Councilmember Wei. At this point, we're going to go to members of the public. And so, um, you'll need to have your hand raised before the first member of the public uh finishes speaking. Everyone will have up to three minutes. We have Jennifer Griffin and Lisa Warren with hands raised at this point. And uh as well as Sadiya Potter, Jonathan Malahan and Mohammed Islam at this point. Okay, welcome Jennifer.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Darcy for unmuting me. Um, hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yes, may I commend the homeowners for uh working with the city uh on this? Um, and I understand the neighbors' issues. Um, I live in a neighborhood with five thousand square foot lots. And every piece of your property is precious. Um, I, I will just start out saying that about ten years ago, the city got rid of using story poles. I will attest that using story poles are a very, very good way of, of addressing. All of neighbors' issues with, we had a very successful two-story go-in with a balcony. Um, a number of years ago and we all were involved. We, the story poles settled many uh issues. Um, the other statement I would make is, um, I, my main concern with this and it's, it's just because of state law. Is the four-foot setback with the ADUs. We're going into uncharted territory here. It's no one's fault. It's just the governor, I guess, signed the ADU law of, I think it was two years ago. And I understand that, but the four-foot setback has never been fully explained. There, I understand the fire marshals have had problems with this, but it is state law. But we are going into an area that is new frontier. Um, I have a great deal of concern about having a structure four feet from the property line. For, it looks like this ADU is at least sixty feet long, so that means that the neighbor on the left side, if I'm correct. Has a structure that's four feet rather than five feet. Um, I, I would be very concerned about that. Now, this is an issue for this neighborhood, obviously. Um, because there are other, uh the, the house is very nice looking, but you still have. A new type of construction. This has never been allowed in Cupertino. My neighborhood, it's five foot and five foot on each side. And I mean, the lots are under sixty square feet wide. Um, I would be concerned um about the four-foot setback. Um, and this is something we, we have to discuss because this could potentially affect everyone. Um, is, and I'm also wondering too, if a, if a homeowner, let's say this house sold. And a homeowner came in and decided that he wanted to put the, the footage back into the house. He has a big family or lots childrens, and he wanted to convert the ADU back into the property. How would he do that and would he have to cut off a percentage? How much more percentage this is the la- the ADU allowed to be built on the lot? Um.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Sadiya Potter, followed by Jonathan Malahan, followed by Mohammed Islam. Welcome, Sadiya. And Sadiya.
Hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, thank you. Um, so my name is Sadiya Poder. I'm a Cupertino resident for last twenty-five years. And all, as well as a homeowner. And I know Jamon and Tariq for last sixteen years. And um, they are willing to build this dream house and planning for a long time. And they are like willing to adjust all the city's rules and privacy. But still, they are going through all this mental stress and decision-making process. So my request to uh city council members and the mayor to allow them to build their dream house. As long as they obey by of the privacy and the building code of Cupertino. And also as a member of um, as a Cupertino resident, if city does not allow to build a new house. Of a resident who follow all the rules and regulations, then it's gonna ruin the Cupertino city's reputation. There will no new, the new buyers will not willing to buy home in Cupertino because they will not be able to build house. As they want to and which will actually is not good for our city. So as a Cupertino resident, I want. City council also consider the rights of a resident. Like as you hear, they are willing to change according to city privacy rule and building plan. So that's all I wanted to say, that you should consider their uh dream to build a house. And live peacefully with their neighbors. And if they need to make some adjustment, they, they will. But allow their part to build their dream house. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Sadiya. Our next speaker is Jonathan Malahan. Welcome, Jonathan.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, uh, nice to meet you all. Uh, so anyways, I, I've given a, a lot of thought to this with my wife. We're, we're actually new homeowners. Uh, this is our first home. I, I live uh to the left of uh Shaman. If uh you're, you're looking from the street view, um. And, and honestly, like, I understand everyone's uh POV, like, I really do and I, I respect it, but. Um, you know, my wife had a, and I had a long conversation, multiple conversations, and we sort of um. Put ourselves in their shoes and, you know, we're, we're gonna look at improving our homes soon. And, and, you know, I thought about the support that I'd want from my neighbors and I certainly, um. You know, wouldn't wanna go against the grain, but also wouldn't wanna have to deal with like the amount of opposition. And from what it sounds like, you know, they've really done everything they can to try to comply and, and be as respectful as possible. Um, you know, and I, I don't know all the city codes, I don't know a, a lot about building uh, uh codes. But I can say I'm looking from a, fr- out it from a pragmatic point of view and um. Listen, you know, you buy a house, you sort of uh, you sort of have to understand like the. The co- opportunity cost, right? And, and living behind, like, you know, and having a two-story home, you must like also understand that people. On the other side of you may also build a two-story home as well. And so, um, I think that not. Uh awarding them, you know, or not supporting that, um, seems a little bit selfish, to be quite honest. And uh, um, I think, you know, as long as they're doing whatever they can to respect. Um, all of the neighbors, like, that's all they can do. Um, and I certainly wouldn't wanna ask them to have to like bend over backwards. To um, like, comply with everyone's requests. Like, I think, you know, as long as they're doing what they can do to like comply with the city, like, that, that. That's all they can do. And so, um, they've communicated with us quite frequently. They've been very respectful neighbors. And for that, I, I support them and I, you know, would love to see them be able to build their dream home and. Um, uh, really, that's all I have to say. And, and I, you know, have a lot of respect for them for the amount of communication that they've uh had with. My wife and myself.
Thank you, Jonathan. Our next speaker is Mohammed Islam, followed by Rizwan Ahmed. Welcome, Mohammed.
Uh, thank you. I'm mayor and um council members. Um, I would like to add a couple of items, like, the Cupertino is getting bigger and lot of. Uh traction it is getting. I would say that we should allow to build new houses to improve the. Um, improve the hmm locality of Cupertino. Uh, sometimes actually we are very outdated and very old houses are there. And um, I, I always support the new building and, but this. Uh, couple actually went through such a horrible time for last few months on this uh project. And it was very frustrating, I would say, actually I can see from their communication. And I can see that they're continuously trying to bend themselves to accommodate any request coming toward them. They want it to be approved. They want to go for the next phase. There is other stages they have to cross. So uh overall, I really appreciate those couple alike, um, what they are trying to um accommodate. Uh although they fulfill their requirement from the beginning and they are trying to open themselves for new suggestion also. They are still entertaining. We are, we are requesting a lot of these things and looks like they are always in the positive tone. Please allow us to go for the next stage. So I think that overall, I strongly support their initiatives. I want them to succeed on that. At the same time, I would actually request our uh city council to consider. And if there is any opportunity to reduce this pain point for the uh next. Um, another new initiatives where this thing could be done or be decided as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next and final speaker is Rizwan Ahmed. Welcome.
Sorry, I have to unmute myself. Can you hear me now?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, good evening. I know it's kind of getting late, so I'll keep it very short. So I am a Cupertino resident myself and I've been a family friend of Jamon and Tariq for a long time. And I think they have been in that house over fifteen years in Cupertino, more than twenty years. And they are, I think, an outstanding resident of, of Cupertino. And I have been following this for quite some time and it feels like over, you know, last one year or so, they have been accumulating. All sorts of requests, trying to comply with the city rules and the requests of the neighbors. And to that extent, I, I just feel like my personal opinion is we shouldn't drag it on any, any longer. I mean, this can continue more and more, to what extent? Uh, so I humbly request that, you know, you approve his application without any further delay. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, uh Rizwan. And we'll bring it back uh to the applicant and the appellant. Um, let's uh, let's make it a few minutes. We did have, I believe, six speakers. So I'll provide up to five minutes for the applicant first and then the appellant, uh since they're bringing the appeal, uh we'll have last word. Prior to council deliberation. So would the applicant like to speak to any of the public comments at this point?
Sure, uh, yes, uh, on the beginning, what we said, we comply with all these city rules. And give our back neighbor what they requested. We comply all this and also we did the privacy plan. And we do, actually, if you look, we, you saw that picture, we do have that privacy long tree over there and we're gonna replace whatever that's. And also, we say if this is the, like a concern, big concern, and reduce the. and reduce the our balcony size. If that's gonna, that's you guys' their request, we can do that one too.
Great, thank you very much. And now we'll hear from the appellant.
Oh, this is Chitash.
Welcome.
Let me let me just mention, you know, thank you for the offer of reducing the balcony. That's a very nice gesture. Ultimately, though, ultimately, ma'am, my my privacy concern with the balcony still stands. You know, at the end of the day, I'd even welcome you, mayor and vice mayor, to visit my home. I'll take you to my second-floor building. And I will absolutely demonstrate to you why all the privacies, et cetera, trees and whatever shrubs will simply not work. As I mentioned, there's a five-foot gradient. The balcony is ten foot from the on the floor. The person standing on there, they're gonna be twenty-one, twenty-two feet above ground level. Direct line of sight into my buildings, into my bedrooms, into my backyard. And I'm on a forty-five-degree angle, as John Wiley so rightly noticed. So as I said, I would still like on the table the notion to remove the balcony. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think there's one more from the appellant.
Yep, she's here. And while I'm talking, right, do you mind that we show that the pictures that the applicant showed to us again?
Oh, feel free. You have three and a half minutes left.
And then maybe the the city planners, Erica, can you show the the presentation that the homeowner showed the pictures? And and by the way, I want that Erica, Erica spring up the picture, right? And and I I do appreciate that the homeowner, they would like to rebuild the house and have a bigger house themselves. And I also believe that they have a good love and memory in that new house. In the old house, but but same thing, right? We also been through this kind of mental stretch, stress, just like you. Because we actually live peacefully here, and suddenly our neighbor want to build a new house. And and one thing I want to bring up is that, again, the privacy. This picture is kind of misleading. That first is that you you probably can see that this picture is taken from the ground floor. But if you're looking at the second floor, you probably will see a complete picture of this. And by the way, right, a lot of tree is is actually on my properties, and some of the tree actually will fall leaf during the winters. So so I I don't believe that this picture can really represent that how this privacy can be accomplished. And also that they are taking from the side. The cover have majority of the tree. But if you look, if you put the angles, maybe a little bit on the left-hand side, you'll see there's a big gap. So I'm still would like to ask the homeowner that if we maybe building some trees and maybe something that you can do to pre, to give us a little bit better privacies, and maybe the best way is that we remove the second-floor balcony. I think that probably, at least for me, right, I think that that would satisfy my concerns. Thank you.
Right, thank you very much. At this point, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council. We will have a deliberation. I'd like to ask for a motion for the purposes of that deliberation. Would anyone like to bring a motion? And I remind council that the default motion is the staff recommendation. Are there any council members I would like to bring forth a motion? Vice Mayor Chow?
Yeah, I'd like to move to approve this application with some minor adjustment. One thing is, I hope the second store window could have frosted window part at the bottom, so for privacy. And then and I think as for the back fence fencing, I think we, our our current code probably is insufficient that only privacy brush is only six feet tall. I'm not sure I can ask for more, so as for our reduced balcony, I think the applicant has been very agreeable, so friendly that I don't want to ask for more. It's like they they have been trying to agree with everything. So how big is it? So that's my motion for now. But for the balcony, I want to discuss it, to hear the views of other council members, whether there is a need to reduce. If so, how much? That I might amend my motion later.
Okay, and so the vice mayor is moving the staff recommendation with a modification with regard to frosted glass on on the bottom of a certain certain area. Does staff feel that that is sufficient direction? Or do we need to make any clarification to that? Erica, you have your microphone on now?
Uh, yes, if I could clarify two points to the frosted window modification. Councilmember, did, were you referring only to the rear second-story windows as the other second-story windows were were waived for privacy plantings?
I'm guessing the next-door neighbor probably would like a similar courtesy. And if if that is for consistency, would that be better? I don't know. And I'd like to see what the project applicant thinks. I don't, I I don't feel strongly about this side window.
So the the two side neighbors did waive their privacy requirements. So if if you are, if you feel that just adding the frosted glass for the rear second-story windows would be sufficient, then I can indicate that.
Okay.
And then my second clarification is you mentioned frosted up to a certain point. Would it be sufficient to have the windows frosted up to five feet from finished floor?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised. Would you like to second the motion at this point? We are asking for seconds.
Okay, no, I would not. I have a I have a question.
Would anyone like to second Vice Mayor Chow's motion? I don't see any hands raised. Are there any alternative motions that that anyone would like to bring at this point? I do see Councilmember Wei, your hand is raised.
I would like to motion as the staff recommend, and then we can talk about it with more details. I just, window covering is probably better than frosted windows, and how can you guarantee a frosted window now when it's break, or is either gonna for the frosted windows? I I would like to motion, the original motion. Then we can talk about it if we're gonna make any decisions.
All right, Councilmember Wei moves the staff recommendation. Councilmember Moore, did you have your hand raised to second at this point?
I have unstable internet, but I'm here to second.
Okay, Councilmember Wei motions, Councilmember Moore seconds the the staff recommendation. All right, we'll go ahead and open up for discussion. I'll go ahead and, you know, just initially put it on three minutes for each of us. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, thank you. I had a quick question. I'm hearing this five-foot. I'm I'm hearing the word gradient, but it it tends to call to mind or or make me think that, oh, there's a five-foot retaining wall in the backyard between the neighbors. I know in my own backyard, I have a I have a couple of feet, like, two-foot retaining wall. So is there anything like that? I did not see an elevation change that drastic or abrupt when I visited the neighborhood, and I have been essentially walking around the neighborhood on on Google Maps, and I'm and I'm not seeing that. So it is possible that there is a certain number of feet from Primrose to Poppy at the curb for each, but without seeing some spot elevations on the surrounding properties or a topo map, I'm I'm not visually seeing anything to to that elevation change. Just has staff been out and can confirm or or say that that is not true?
Okay, so clarification to staff. We'll go ahead. Barring any prohibition from our city attorney's office, we'll go ahead and open up questions at this time during deliberations to to staff members. I think if we want to expand it beyond that, we'll need to reopen the hearing. But I'll check in with the city attorney's office if we do cross that bridge. So would anyone on staff like to address Councilmember Moore's question? Okay, I don't see any microphones being turned on, but now I do. Erica?
Sorry, not fast enough. I I do not see a retaining wall on fifteen oh six Primrose Way, but perhaps the the property owner can verify. I'm also, I only have access to the topography for the subject property. I'm trying to see if I can access it for the properties to the rear.
Okay, that sounded like an invitation to the applicant to to speak. So let me check in with the city attorney at this point. Chris, do we need to reopen the hearing in order for the applicant to to speak at this point?
If it's just a clarifying question, we can we can ask the applicant at this time.
Okay, very good. Welcome. So did the applicant catch that question? And Councilmember Moore, if you care to repeat it?
Okay, so I was hearing that there was a five-foot gradient differential, and I'm wondering if there is a retaining wall, which would kind of indicate that change, because I would think that there might be. And then I just want to point out, maybe if this type of an issue shows up in the future, we want to get the finished floors of of the of the structures around, if possible. But is there is there anything like a five-foot retaining wall between the the lots?
I see heads shaking. You'll need to unmute your mic if you want to be heard.
Yeah, we I we don't have any in our property. We don't have any retaining wall.
Okay, thank you. And then I I want to mention that it there is, there's, when you are providing when you're providing shade trees, that it is, it's a two-way street. So there there was a comment in in the the written information that we had about having views being blocked of of the the surrounding area. But at the same time, if you're asking for privacy screening, you're also going to be blocking the the view. And when I see that the form of the building, of the form of your home, the way it was reduced in size on the second floor, it was it was very accommodating to allow a view space to be open. But if you do go ahead and have some agreement with the with the neighbors, with the with the two-story home, that you provide this privacy screening, it may have the the unintended consequence of blocking the views around yours. So I just hope that when when things are worked out with that, that that's kept in mind. So that you don't unintentionally create a problem for for either of you.
Right. If you look at the picture we show, that's the tree under my backyard is touching all the way to the and the pool height. So actually, they cannot see our side, we cannot see their side. It's already is the, you know, is the, like, a blocking, big tree. It's a blocking both side.
Even though we're gonna do them.
So it is more than twenty, around twenty feet height. It is, it is not nothing they can see, we can see. It's the picture already showing, and the house, if you're a city member, like to see it, I can take you guys there, and you can see it. You cannot see other side. Anyway, they cannot see, we cannot see what we have it currently.
All right, thank you.
Okay, great. Councilmember Wei?
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So I would like to make two comments. The first is, I get it, the neighbors has privacy issues, they have rights. But the homeowners also have rights. They've done everything according to our ordinances, our codes, and they even did a little bit less than what's not the maximum of everything. And this case has gone to the planning commissioner, and the planning commission is being denied. Now it's coming to the city council. I really don't think our city council, I'm gonna ask Chris, actually, our attorney, have the right to say you're conforming to all the codes, but we're asking to do and do this unless you, else you won't get a permit. I I would like to know if the property owner has rights. The second is, there really really is no evidence that this homeowner would abuse their rights. And the third, actually, I want to say, my house actually is about five feet. I don't know the exact feet, a degree lower. I'm on the lower side. What I did is I planted privacy trees on my backyard. Okay, so I spent thirty-one years. Now it's way over the the neighbors, they couldn't even see me. So I did it to protect myself because I care. And so I I really think it goes both ways. The new owner did this, this owner, that's very accommodating. They'll say, whatever tree you want me to plant, I'll plant it. But the neighbors, just like me, who's lower, could also do something themselves too. If they feel one side of privacy tree is not enough, they could do something on their side. If you come to my house, that's exactly what I did. After thirty-one years, it's really very private right now. So that's my comment. And I would like to, Attorney Chris, Chris, could you comment? Do we have the right to ask the owners to reduce this, reduce that, even though they're within our codes?
So so as Erica's explained in her presentation, the the project is consistent with objective development standards. So so what that means is that the city council cannot deny approval of the project or impose a condition that would have the effect of reducing the density. That doesn't that doesn't mean that council has no discretion to impose other conditions that don't affect the density, which is defined as the ability of the project to provide housing. So 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 there, but there is that constraint on the council's discretion under state law.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah, first, so and first, I think the reason this is on this agenda of the city council is because we have a right to deny, even though that won't be, that's unlikely, something we would do. However, if we don't have that right to deny, it won't be on our agenda. And that's what the opportunity we have provided to all residents to appeal to the planning commission and appeal to the city council. It seems to be too much appeal, but then my heart goes out to both sides. I think both sides, I think the neighbors, if they didn't feel strongly about their privacy concern, they wouldn't appeal twice. But then my heart goes out to the property owner too. They have really accommodated a lot along the way, they changed everything the state city asked for. And but then it's our job now, it's good that when it's discretionary approval, we have this opportunity to work with each other. Maybe we we won't deny, of course, but then we could negotiate and have a better project that both sides give a little and are happier together. So I think that's what, why we are considering it here. But I want to clarify something with Chris. With SB nine, this project, if it come to the council after January first twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, we actually won't, it will actually be approved ministerially. Is that right?
Not necessarily, because the project, that's because of the size of the units. It doesn't necessarily qualify, would not necessarily qualify for approval under SB nine, although you know, it's 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 possible that we could adopt standards that allow it. But that's that's part of the reason why, you know, we're working on developing objective standards for SB nine projects.
Oh, so it may not qualify? Okay.
This specific, this specific project may not. You know, there's there's there certainly may well be a hypothesis. You know, there's there's there certainly well may well be a hypo- hypothetical different project on this lot that might.
I see. Okay. So I think, at least from here, we learned that many neighbors are concerned about backyard balcony, because this is not the first project. There were earlier ones. So maybe when we adjust the standard, any balcony, any any project with back backyard balcony should be subject to discretionary approval because of these concerns. And then I would like to ask. I. So. So one one concern is about the balcony. And I'm wondering how it does the other council member. How how do the other council members think about the, how how big is the current balcony?
Hundred fifteen feet.
A hundred fifteen feet.
Hundred fifteen square feet.
Towards. A hundred fifteen feet to the backyard?
No, a hundred fifteen square.
From from the fence, I guess.
Hundred fifteen square feet.
Fifteen feet long, I think six feet wide, five or six feet, actually, something. I.
So five, six feet wide in terms of is the the distance to the fence, right, to to the neighbors. So if when they are talking about reducing the size, they are thinking maybe a smaller.
Yeah, Councilmember.
Yeah.
Councilmember Chow, if you could wrap up in a minute, I'm speeding you.
Okay, yeah, I I would like to know what other council members think about the potential reduction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Willie, did you want to speak on this item, the the motion on the table?
Um, I think the only only additional comment, you know, like, I I had said, you know, if Jatish felt that additional planting for like ten feet along that one side of the property that would provide him some protection, if he wanted to request that. Councilman or Vice Mayor Chow's question about the deck. I don't think you can really reduce the depth by much. If it's six feet from the house to the railing, you know, a two, a four, four by eight sheet of plywood, and that's just an extra two feet. So that allows two people to walk by each other when they're on that deck. But I don't really think you could reduce the depth. The the width maybe, and the applicant, the homeowner has actually suggested that he'd be willing to reduce the width of it, but not the depth, you know. I I'm open to that, but I I'm really driven by the neighbors being the ones that requested. I think John, John or Jatish, it said, no deck, but I don't I don't think we can go that far. And so I'm not hearing him talk about the smaller width wide. And I'll I'll leave my comment at that, that. Yeah, it's, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. I I I'm just gonna make some very brief comments with the remaining time that's here. I I I think that I think that it's clear, to me at least, that the 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 appeal, you know, just from the perspective of compliance, should be denied. I'm happy to hear willingness from the applicant to continue to work with the neighbors to help ensure some privacy concerns are addressed to the extent that they can. But, you know, it it's it's a situation right here where I I think we have some leeway to encourage that kind of action to take place. I'm I'm not gonna attempt to require it. But in terms of any square footage, I'm very hesitant to reduce down square footage that's reflected here, especially given the fact that, you know, we have seen applications that have gone up to the literal square foot of allowance. And this is not what's happening here at this point. So I I I will be supporting the motion on the table. Are there any other comments? Vice Mayor Chow, I see you, I'll I'll seed over my remaining thirty seconds to you. And so Vice Mayor Chow.
I'll seed my time today.
You have two minutes total, Vice Mayor Chow, if you wish to use it. And you'll need to unmute yourself.
Could I propose to add a small amendment of planting protective trees rather than brush so that it adds at least adds two feet extra to the screening?
That can be proposed, certainly, as a friendly amendment. Would the the maker of the motion accept that as a friendly amendment? I believe that was Councilmember Wei.
Okay, I would accept it, but add upon mutual mutual agreement. I would not like, I think mayor says it, I I don't want to request the the owners to do it. But upon mutual agreement, they want to do it, that is perfectly fine. I think collaboration between the neighbors is really important. I I just don't want to mandate anything. This appeal has been denied by the planning commission. I think they're pretty reasonable. I would think they probably will accommodate. So Vice Mayor Chow, if I could add to your friendly amendment upon mutual agreement?
So I think we can hear from the applicant now.
Okay, I'll ask the applicant to to speak to that. To instead, is that?
Sure, we sure, what you would like to do?
What she wants?
Um, I I believe that there were, well, let me have Vice Mayor Chow.
I think at the back fence, you have chosen privacy brush that would grow up to only six feet. And then if you had chosen privacy trees, that would be eight feet, just two feet taller. So would that be agreeable for?
Do it. Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Sure, we'll do.
Okay, that's fine.
We'll do.
We'll do it.
Okay, well, it sounds like Councilmember Wei is willing to put it in as a as an encouraged suggestion. And so Councilmember Moore, you you as a secondor, will you accept that?
I would like some clarification from staff, because this was in the in this plan, we have the Loris Nobleist Saratoga privacy planting, minimum fifteen gallon and six-foot planted height. That means it needs to be six feet at the start, is my understanding. And that the heights, when I asked from Erica earlier on, it seems so it would something like fifteen to forty feet ultimate height, and that the the neighbors could agree upon some other tree or or hedging of some material other than that of their own accord. So I I am disinclined to to mandate anything as well. And I think that having an opened, such an open-ended modification is unnecessary, but I'd like to make sure that that's true.
You you, I'm sorry, you'd like to make sure that what is true?
That that the neighbors are able to negotiate what they want on their own, that we don't need to mandate that they have trees or or the hedging. Because in the in the plan, they have the 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 trees already. This is a tree, the Loris Nobleist.
As as described, this is not, this is not a mandate.
I I just don't see the point in doing it at all, since we already have, they already have the option to to make a make a choice along with their neighbors and negotiate. I don't see why we even need to have this this amendment.
It's a gesture, I guess.
Well, it's glad, I'm glad to see cooperation and and a backing down of. Well, it it seems like the secondor is not accepting the friendly amendment as rearticulated by the motioner. So so let's go ahead and close this out. I I do see Councilmember Wei lowered your hand. Vice Mayor Chow, I'm I'm gonna go ahead and close this out. I I mean, it seems like essentially all suggestions for a mandate have been kind of gently reformatted and essentially.
I'd like to, can I propose a substitute motion?
Certainly propose a substitute motion, yes. What what is your substitute motion?
So I'd like to approve this staff recommendation with the the modification that the back fence screening tree to be a privacy tree rather than privacy brush. And add one tree at at the corner on either side so that it provides additional screening for the neighbor at forty-five degree angle. So that's all.
Okay, you know, I actually see the applicant's nodding. I'll just make a note of that. And so.
Sure, sure, sure.
You're amendable that?
Yeah, yes.
You know, move this along. I'll go ahead and second the substitute motion. Because of the amendability, I I I thank you for that. Thank you very much. So I'll I'll go ahead and open up for discussion on the substitute motion. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, so that does bring up the the point that I was mentioning earlier that with regards to now you you're mandating a tree at a forty-five degree angle that of ambiguous different distance from the property line, which would be to screen the neighbor which has a two-story house. And it and there were some, there's some concern that you would actually be blocking the view that they would have around that home because they had reduced the bulk of the second story so much. So I while I appreciate that the applicant is is willing to accommodate this and and move things along that way, we don't actually know if that's something that the neighbors are actually wanting, this change from 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 shrubs to trees. And to me, I would still let let them negotiate on their own with staff's support for for discussion and and suggestions for what they can do and pros and cons. And and to me, I would leave it in staff's hands to to help support that.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Willie?
I I I don't know that I have anything to contribute, so.
Okay, let me check in with our city attorney. City Attorney Jensen, you you had mentioned some parameters. Do you think that we are within our discretion here under the substitute motion as described?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And let me check in with with planning staff. Do you feel you have clear direction as to where to go if this substitute motion is approved?
Or I, if possible, I would just like to get clarification on on one point, which is the location of the trees. As shown on the the site plan, there is a five-foot wire clearance easement. Or, yes, there's a five-foot wire clearance easement towards the rear. I just wanted to see if the city council had any any kind of as to the location of the privacy trees or or if it needs to be installed anywhere outside of that wire clearance easement.
As the secondor of the motion, I'd like to provide the discretion to work with the applicant to the extent that it becomes practicable. Is that is that workable for the motioner, Vice Mayor Chow?
Yeah, I think it's okay. This is the, as you'll see on the screen, the purple circle is what I'm thinking of. But, yeah, I think the motion could be modified that these two additional trees is could be negotiated with the neighbors.
Okay, and 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 given discretion to the staff to, you know, help make that determination.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Wei, your hand is raised. Did you want to make a comment?
Yes, I I I I have to say, I agree with Councilmember Moore. We are getting into details and it the applicants are very, very collaborating. And I I really think it would be nice to leave it to the staff to work with the applicants and work with the neighbors and find satisfactory solutions. And I I have confidence that's gonna happen, because the forty-five degree trees and all that, this this project needs to move on. If they have to come back to council again, time is money. I just don't feel that we are in a position to really mandate a lot of things where, you know, like Erica says, what if the easement this and that? I I tend to want to agree with Council. We are, Vice Mayor Chow, I understand we want to be accommodating, but I think this applicant is very accommodating. So I just feel that we are mandating two details.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Councilmember Wei. I'm gonna go ahead and support the substitute motion as a secondor. I'll I'll remind everyone that this is still a rejection of the appeal. And I thank the applicant for their amended, their continued amendability. You know, in my experience, if if you don't put this in, it basically becomes very porous. And so I I I do, you know, appreciate everyone's, you know, efforts to 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 bring this to a resolution at this point. So at this time, I would like to ask the city clerk to conduct a roll call vote on the substitute motion.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Wei?
No.
Councilmember Willie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries with Moore and Wei voting no.
Okay, very good. We're at past nine o'clock right now. So let's go ahead and take a five-minute break before we go on to item number ten. So we'll reconvene at nine seventeen. Ten. Item number ten is to consider amendments to the Cupertino municipal code in sections nineteen dot five six dot oh three oh and in nineteen dot five six dot oh three oh F, nineteen dot five six dot oh four oh, and table nineteen dot five six dot oh four A, and the addition of section nineteen dot five six dot oh eight oh, the density bonus ordinance, to allow density bonuses and other incentives as provided by state law, and a new section nineteen dot five six dot oh eight oh, providing that the density bonus ordinance will be interpreted consistent with state density bonus law. And this is application number MCA dash two zero two one dash zero zero three, with the applicant being the city of Cupertino. This would apply citywide. And so would we please have a staff report? I believe this is from Pew as well. Welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and City Council. Here to present the staff report for municipal code amendment, which is a density bonus ordinance update. As council may recall, we are trying to make these amendments to the density bonus ordinance in order to comply with eighty-two, three, four, five. Just as background, there was a award program item related to affordable housing strategies, which included updates to the city's density bonus ordinance. In general, eighty-two, three, four, five increased the maximum density bonus that non-one-hundred-percent affordable projects would get from thirty-five percent to fifty percent in exchange for a very small four to five percent increase in affordability. It also provided that the city could adopt its own housing program or ordinance or both to incentivize development of affordable housing by allowing any bonuses that exceeded thirty-five percent. The city council adopted an ordinance in compliance with the housing program that it adopted in December twenty twenty, back in May. However, the Department of Housing and Community Development expressed concern in a letter that they sent, which was sadly not open until after the city council hearing date on May fourth. And they basically opined that the adopted program by resolution and ordinance amendments did not create a program and provided insufficient incentives and did not comply with eighty-two, three, four, five requirements. And as a result, the changes presented today are in order to ensure that our ordinance complies with eighty-two, three, four, five. This is a table in the density bonus ordinance chapter, which reflects the changes that are necessary to in to implement eighty-two, three, four, five. This also includes an amendment from an earlier bill about the density bonuses that one-hundred-percent housing developments, affordable housing developments could get, which is about eighty by eighty percent. which is about eighty percent. As far as our analysis goes, the city has consistently approved density bonus projects, including Valco, Marina, Veranda, and Westport projects. The city offers a host of incentives to incentivize affordable housing within other parts of the municipal code. We have flexible development zoning standards, we have a BMR housing program, which is implemented through our municipal code and the other manuals that the city has adopted. However, its city continues to assert that the city's existing density bonus program does not comply with AB two three four five. We also had evidence that showed those based on analysis done by the Hosra Economic Group, which showed that developers are most likely to use the program by providing very low housing income, very low-income housing, because that provides the most bang for their buck in terms of density bonuses that they could receive. And for projects with very low-income housing, the AB two three four five's maximum bonus was not very different from the city's density for affordability ratio, where we were requiring seventeen percent very low-income units for a density of fifty percent bonus. In addition, AB two three four five also had other incentives and concessions that were written into law and this reflects the changes that is necessary to the city's ordinance to reflect those changes. In addition to that, there's a new section that is proposed to make sure that there are no conflicts between the city's adopted municipal code and state density bonus law. And this section essentially states that. With regard to SEQA review, these are exempt under SEQA guidelines in a variety of ways. There is no, you know, those amendments themselves will not result in any direct or reasonable foreseeable indirect physical change in the environment, and therefore they don't constitute a project under SEQA. The Planning Commission met on August tenth and on September fourteenth, twenty twenty one, and they voted at their September fourteenth, twenty twenty one meeting on a three-two vote with Commissioner Madhavatla and Commissioner Wong voting no to recommend that the council adopt these amendments to comply with AB two three four five. And with that, the recommended action is that the council tonight adopt the interviews and conduct the first reading of the ordinance to adopt the proposed amendments. And with that, I conclude my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions we also have. City Attorney Chris Jensen, who can answer other questions.
Thank you, Pew, are there any questions of staff of Pew or Chris from City Council on this item? I don't see hands up at this point. Okay, let me go to Vice Mayor Chow.
So what's the difference between adopting this ordinance versus just rescinding the previous one?
So the biggest practical difference is that is that the state density bonus law does direct local jurisdictions to adopt and implementing density bonus ordinance. So the best practice for for doing that is obviously to amend the ordinance to conform with state density bonus law. So that's why, that's the reason why we are recommending an amendment to the existing ordinance, whether that's simply rescinding the local density bonus ordinance.
So we are just implementing something we would have done even if we didn't adopt the ordinance earlier?
The practical effect is likely the same. There are many jurisdictions that have density bonus ordinances that are not in compliance with state law. The practical effect of that is typically that they have to comply with the state law instead of their local ordinance. But we do recommend this as the best approach because the state density bonus law does direct local jurisdictions to adopt an ordinance. Cupertino already does have an ordinance and these amendments will bring it in full conformance with recent changes to the density bonus law.
So as some other council members mentioned today and also earlier, that we really need is BMR housing for families. And is it at all possible in this kind of density bonus ordinance address that issue that we are getting really imbalanced BMR housing? That it tends to be for singles, studio, or one bedroom, whether that two or three bedroom. Is it possible to incentivize more units that we need through this kind of ordinance?
So I think there are other policies and ordinances the city could adopt and other initiatives the city could pursue to increase the production of affordable housing. I think tying it to the density bonus is difficult because the percentages of density bonus that are awarded for any given level of affordability are set by state law. So if the city wanted to acquire more affordability or a different mix of affordable units across the board, there are lawful pathways to do that. I think we run into difficulty when you try to achieve that goal by restricting access to the density bonus that's allowed for a particular affordability level.
So earlier, someone also mentioned about intellectually and developmentally disabled individuals who need a special kind of housing, so that also won't be addressed by this density bonus ordinance, right? And so if we want to help support more of that kind of housing, that will be a different policy that we might adopt. Or extremely low income, or like extremely low income, or that's a level we have not been able to address.
Right, there are different policies and perhaps different funding sources that would help address that and that would really be a question for our housing staff about whether there's specific, you know, grants or other funding sources, other programs that would support the city's desire to add housing for individuals with disabilities.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to the public at this point, if we don't have further questions from council. And we have three hands raised from the public. Those are Jennifer Griffin, Jean Bedord, and Kalisha Webster. And other members of the public, if you'd like to speak, please have your hand raised before the end of the first comment. Brian O'Neil as well at this point, Jennifer Griffin, welcome, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy, hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. And also right now, I spent a great deal of my summer and, you know, this is conflicted with trying to care for my elderly parents, you know, other issues we all have with pandemic. But I give our governor a vote of no confidence for introducing Beblum into our state rule. These, anyone that voted these housing bills in ought to not be governor. They are conflicting, they're poorly written, they are obviously set to allow the neighborhoods to be given away to the highest bidder, four-foot setbacks, okay? Increased fifty percent density, who is writing this stuff? Let's be honest, this is a dead giveaway to developers. And the governor needs to be held accountable for it. I am very, very concerned that Cupertino is being reamed by such inflammatory bills as AB two three forty-five, which was one of the last bills to pass at the last moment of the twenty twenty legislative session. I mean, at midnight, it is a bad bill, it is poorly written, it is to take advantage and cover up transgressions. It is to deceive the public. And this is my point where the Democratic, if Democratic Party is condoning this behavior, they have really got off the rails. I don't know about the Republican Party, I don't know what their feelings are about these bills, but I have grave concerns about where whoever is directing the Democratic Party in this state needs to seriously consider what the definition of democracy is. Have we gone into communist land, far-left socialism? But I, as a member of the public, do not appreciate having my democracy in my state multi-generation, being taken advantage of and given away to the highest bidder. Our governor is going to have to be held accountable. And I am very concerned that he is setting us up for some sort of totalitarian rule, and that is not the way California should be governed, thank you.
Jennifer, our next speaker is Jean Bedord, welcome, Jean.
Thank you, Darcy. Can I bring up my presentation?
It looks like it's being brought up now. And Kirsten, the presentation itself is not actually visible here.
I can't see it either.
It looks like Kirsten is actually frozen here, so unfortunately, Jean, let's do this, let's call on you a little bit later. Kirsten, you're back.
Sorry, I just felt my crash there, let me try and share my screen again, I'm having technical.
Okay.
Can you see that?
Excellent.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Paul and councilmembers. My name is Jean Bedord and I am a longtime Cupertino resident. I am here tonight to urge you, this council, to approve the density bonus ordinance that is before you. This council has spent too much time and resources on a matter that does little to improve the housing situation in Cupertino. Next slide. As a member of the public, oh, you went too far.
Sorry. There you go. Is that right?
All right, there we go, correct, okay. As a member of the public, I am concerned that this council needs to be more aware of the resources involved in each agenda item that comes before council. Staff time is a limited resource, particularly constrained by COVID-nineteen. Any item that comes before the Planning Commission or the council takes significant resources. Staff time is involved, legal review is required. And then there's the time spent in public meetings and public engagement. Deferring decisions on agenda items means additional work. Next slide. Now let's look at what happened to the density bonus ordinance that is before you. The saga started in December, almost ten months ago. At that time, the California Renters Legal Advocacy and Education Fund, known as CARLA, which won its case in Los Altos, warned the council that the resolution would probably not comply with HCD regulations. Yet, the council barged ahead. This is the timeline delineating all the Planning Commission and council meetings. Nine meetings plus a technical advisory letter from HCD gave us state resources. Council was advised of the possibility of litigation at each council meeting. I urge you to approve this revised ordinance as presented by the staff. Please don't rest any more resources on this ordinance. And above all, avoid unnecessary litigation. It's time to close this chapter. And maybe, just maybe, get back to the good graces of HCD so the city can move ahead with more important matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean, our next speaker is Kalisha Webster, welcome back, Kalisha. Kalisha, are you there, can you hear us? Okay, unfortunately, we're not able to hear you, and so I recommend maybe try to restart. And then I'll come back to you after Brian speaks. Welcome, Brian O'Neil.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, Brian O'Neil, an attorney with Jack Friedman and Patterson, representing Yes in My Backyard and Yimby Law. Just wanted to voice my support for the amendment and urge you to adopt the amendment to make sure that your density bonus is consistent with state law. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian, and I see that probably what has happened is that we've had a reset. Let me go ahead and call on our other speaker with a hand up, Lisa Warren, welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. I just have, it's come to me that I have a question that I know can't be answered tonight, but I think about. When you're making any adjustments to comply, quote-unquote, with existing random laws that have been passed recently, when an initiative, a statewide initiative could potentially pass that negates all of those things, I just hope that it's not difficult to undo what has been done. And that hopefully is something that needs to be considered in our near future, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, and thank you that that's given us an opportunity to call on Kalisha again. Kalisha, are you there?
Are you hearing me?
We are, welcome back.
Perfect, I'm so sorry. All right, good evening once again, commissioners. My name is Kalisha Webster and I'm a housing advocate with Housing Choices, a nonprofit which provides housing navigation and housing retention services funded by San Andreas Regional Center to people with intellectual and developmental disabilities in Cupertino and throughout Santa Clara County. Under state and federal law, people with developmental disabilities are entitled to receive community-based services that allow them to live in the least restricted setting. This has led to the closure of many licensed care facilities and group homes over the past twenty years in favor of inclusive community housing. While regional centers are able to provide funding for services to assist people with developmental disabilities wanting to live independently, they are prohibited from paying an individual's rent. Accordingly, local jurisdictions are required to assess and plan for the housing needs of people with developmental disabilities as part of their housing element. Many other cities across Santa Clara and San Mateo County are addressing this housing need by requesting that developers of affordable housing include a certain number of units for people with developmental disabilities who require coordinated services funded by the regional center to live independently. One way in which Cupertino can incentivize developers to include these set-aside units for people with developmental disabilities is to include a reduction in the inclusionary requirement if the units are designated for people with developmental disabilities, similar to the County of San Mateo's inclusionary housing ordinance. And to Vice Mayor Chow's question, the County of San Mateo has similar reduced inclusionary requirements for large family unions. The city can also include higher density bonuses above state density bonus allowances for properties which include units for people with developmental disabilities. As increased density makes it more feasible for developers to include set-asides of the extremely low-income units that people with developmental disabilities require. City can also include waivers for parking reductions at properties with set-aside units for people with developmental disabilities, especially at transit-oriented sites, as most people with these disabilities do not drive, so have high rates of dependency, thank you.
Thank you, Kalisha, and we'll bring you back to council at this point. I'd like to ask for a motion, would anyone like to bring one? We'll go ahead and poll the recommended action, Councilmember Moore, your hand is raised.
Okay, I move that we find the actions exempt from SEQA and adopt the amendments to Cupertino Municipal Code sections nineteen fifty-six oh three zero, table nineteen fifty-six point zero three zero, nineteen fifty-six point zero three zero F, and table nineteen fifty-six point zero four zero A to allow for density bonuses and other incentives to be provided by state law and to add a new section nineteen point fifty-six point zero eight zero, providing that the density bonus ordinance will be interpreted consistent with state density bonus law.
Okay, Councilmember Moore, so let me just confirm that you are moving the recommended action in our agenda, is that correct? For item number ten?
Absolutely.
Okay, great, so Madam City Clerk, I realize this is a bit backwards, but can you conduct the first reading of ordinance number two one dash two two three zero at this point, please?
And Mr. Mayor, also, I don't know if you're going to mention that that wasn't actually included in Councilmember Moore's motion to read by title.
That's why I cleaned it out by saying that.
Thank you, yes. Thank you. Yes.
Right.
Thank you.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 21-2230, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending Cupertino Municipal Code Sections 19.56.030A, Table 19.56.030, 19.56.030F, Table 19.56.040A, and adding section 19.56.080, density bonus ordinance to allow density bonuses and other incentives as provided by state law.
Okay, and I'll take it back just one more time with Councilmember Moore. Please confirm that you're moving the recommended action following the first reading.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Wade, did you want to second that motion?
Yes, please. I'll second it.
Okay. Are there any comments or follow-up questions at this point, Councilmember Moore?
Um, yes, I just, I want to point out that I do really appreciate in the, in the staff analysis, item C, incentives for affordable housing, I really appreciate that that was summarized and included. And I do want to just mention what we already know, that, that Westport provided the financial data to not disperse their BMR units. Those are senior BMR units. They left 53 density bonus units on the table and did not even elect to use them. And they provided no BMR housing for families despite having the three-bedroom townhouses and row houses. The dispersal did not get into those units. And then Valco also used density bonus, the Valco SB 35 project used density bonus and both worsened the housing shortage by more units than they actually provided. And again, they also failed to provide housing for families with children. And additionally, they placed the BMR units underneath the 30-acre green roof on a site that needs hazardous waste mitigation, apparently. So I think in the future, I think we really need to consider how many of these concessions or that we're willing to, to give away if we are ending up with what looks like a discriminatory result. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. And I appreciate those comments. Let me expand upon the term discriminatory. I feel that we need to be treated fairly and not targeted by any particular interest or group. And I think that Cupertino has demonstrated time and again that we are very much vested in making sure that we deliver affordable housing solutions to the public. And when you look at that Westport project at the Oaks Shopping Center site as it exists right now, originally that had much more office space. In fact, it had office space. Currently, it does not. And it was precisely because of our process and because of our very honest and brave ability to have those conversations in the public that we were able to deliver a housing project. And so I, I would say, you know, given the fact that we are conforming this to AB 2345, I, I do want to, you know, make note of the fact that we based our ability, our, our attempt to deliver more affordable housing units in no small part upon our experiences with the Oaks Shopping Center and the Westport project. And so I find it very unfortunate that we're in a situation right now following a staff recommendation in the first place where we have to spend all of this time in what I perceive as a bit of a chest-beating exercise, frankly, where, where, where people are, are pointing their finger at us and saying, well, you're just not conforming and therefore we're going to bully you around until you recraft the language so that it conforms with this language. But the fact of the matter is, we were attempting and we were very proud to be able to deliver these additional affordable housing units to the public. And, you know, I think these back channels, I think these, you know, quiet whisperings to, you know, various entities to essentially bully us for whatever reason, I think they're quite counterproductive. And so, you know, I'm happy to conform this at this point, but I'm also equally convinced, just as I was very proud that we were bringing this forward in the first place, I'm equally convinced that the efforts of these so-called affordable housing advocates have actually resulted in a diminishment of what will ultimately occur in Cupertino in terms of the overall numbers of affordable housing. So, so please chew on that, you know, when you go home and you think about this. There's no cause to chestbeat or to try to militate a litigation at this point. But we have in good faith done our best to try to speak to the vicissitudes and necessities of the affordable housing dearth. And, you know, I don't think that we should be discriminated against and persecuted and scapegoated for doing that. Because ultimately, if we are in good faith working together, we are going to get much more traction in resolving this issue. Councilmember Willie, you have comments?
Yeah. Not to let this truly go by without making a few words. I, I fully support what you've said, Mayor. The words that I would use is, our country is founded on democracy. And democracy is to represent the people of this country, of this state, of this city. The elected leaders have a duty to represent the people that they're responsible for. We're not here to represent the people of New York or Florida or Michigan. We're here to represent the people. To the best of our ability, we're here to represent the residents of Cupertino. And when entities from outside come to, to attack us and, and, you know, make a mess out of things, in my view, that is so anti-democratic. And so our work here is not easy and simple. Hindsight is 2020. But we're here to make sure we do our best for this community that we're to represent. And if it takes us two, five, or seven meetings to do what we feel is the right thing for the community, it's our time. We're the ones that are here. Tonight, it's 9:48. I will stay until midnight. I will stay until 2 o'clock in the morning if, that I'm able to do what I feel is necessary for this community. And for somebody to kind of shortchange, I think it's, it, it's just wrong. Democracy is where it needs to start and democracy is where it needs to end. And we need to do our best for the, for the constituents that we're responsible for. So with that being said, I believe we're doing exactly what's intended with democracy. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next we have Vice Mayor Chow.
Thank you, Mayor, for your comment. It's extremely applicable. And I think it's, it's true Cupertino have been scapegoated unfairly. This council, even the council before me, have approved all five housing site projects. When many other cities probably have approved the sites that are, no proposals even made, was even made. But this council approved identified sites that's viable and the projects were approved pretty quickly. And none of these efforts were recognized by any of the housing advocates. Their focus was only on Valco project, which converts a shopping mall into a mega office park. That actually creates a lot more housing, a lot, a lot more traffic that's just too much for a small town like Cupertino. The contention has been too much office, but the housing advocates call this project a housing project. That's deceitful. I hope the housing advocates here be, could be honest when you represent yourself, when you represent Cupertino. Recognize a city when it's doing a good job approving Westport project, approving Hampton, approving Verinda, approving Marina without, with little opposition from the community. Cupertino community is not, not anti-housing. It's anti-mega office, which is what has given us this housing crisis because San Francisco and San Mateo County build seven times more office than they used to. But Cupertino council has been trying to, to do our part to not worsen the situation. Let's recognize that. And like Councilmember Willie said, we are elected by Cupertino residents. Naturally, we have to fight to represent our residents. The legislators are represented by Assembly District. They represent their interests. You have special interest groups. You represent your special interests. But my duty have to be for every Cupertino residence. And it might be different. I might have to view things differently from yours. That doesn't mean, mean us are, are bad guy. We are just doing our job. And Cupertino residents, although the housing price is high, or Cupertino happen to be the area where families stretch their budget in order to afford an address where they, 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 they think their kids can go to a better school, but then they cannot afford Palo Alto. They cannot afford Menlo Park. They barely can afford Cupertino. And Cupertino has failed to pass a measly 250, 500 parcel tax twice. Because our families are just stretched to the limit. We are not a affluent community. So we really need to look out for them. And that's what a lot of us are trying to do. And we, but at the same time, I think all of us are concerned about the developmentally disabled people. And we are trying, we are working on projects that's trying to serve that community because with a lot of focus on homeless, that particular population has been ignored. And they have, the homeless population has been competing for resource with them. And then, and we, thankfully, a lot of advocates has been speaking in the council meeting, so we do want to address that. And there, there are extremely low-income people. That's not addressed by the density bonus project. And then we are facing developers, applicants, who keep reducing our city adopted density bonus requirements. So all the housing advocates, please, please, could you advocate to the developers? Don't cut down our housing, our, our, our very minimum BMR housing requirements so that we can get BMR housing for families, so that we can get housing, BMR housing that's dispersed with regular units rather than concentrated in one place. Give us what our ordinance require and don't allow that conception that those to be taken away by concession. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. We are now, we are now at our, our vote for the item on the, on the table. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wade?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. We are on to item number 11. And item number 11 is to consider conducting a first reading of an ordinance related to municipal code amendments to mandate organic waste disposal reduction and edible food recovery. This is required by state Senate Bill 1383, that's 1383 and its implementing regulations. We have Ursula Sorova from our city staff to provide the presentation on this item. Welcome, Ursula.
Good evening. Thank you. Hopefully slides are showing?
Uh, they're not showing yet, but I'm sure they're on.
Try clicking one more time.
There you go.
All right. Great. Good evening, Mayor Paul, council members. I am Ursula Sorova, Environmental Programs Manager. And I appreciate the opportunity to give this overview of the draft ordinance before you tonight to ensure our compliance with the regulations under SB 1383. My slide should take less than nine minutes to present. Deborah Miller from Schutzhullian Weinberger is also available this evening to answer questions if needed. And John Zarelli is here as well from Recology. Senate Bill 1383 is California's short-lived climate pollutant reduction strategy. SB 1383 is a sweeping set of requirements designed to reduce the amount of organic waste such as food, food-soiled paper, and yard trimmings from ending up in landfills. The statewide goals are, by 2025, to reduce organics to landfill by 75% and increase the amount of edible food recovered instead of being thrown away by 20% over 2014 levels. These goals were developed because about half of what Californians throw away is organic material, including edible food. And that is also true here in Cupertino. When organics end up in the landfill environment, they generate methane, which is a super pollutant, a climate super pollutant, 72 times more potent than carbon dioxide. This contributes to climate change. Meanwhile, many Californians do not have enough to eat. There are six basic categories for compliance with 1383. Mandatory organics collection services to all residents and businesses, establish food recovery programs, do education outreach, procure products made from recovered organic materials, make sure we have enough organics processing and food recovery capacity, and monitor for compliance and conduct enforcement. Are we ready? I believe we are. We already have organic service available to all sectors, including apartment complexes, which we've required since 2018. All the food recovery activities are being coordinated at the county level, which includes outreach to the large Tier 1 and Tier 2 surplus edible food generators. Tier 1 includes supermarkets and large grocery stores, and they need to have food recovery contracts and practices in place starting in 2022. All Tier 1 businesses in Cupertino have already been contacted and provided education and tools for compliance. Tier 2 includes large restaurants, large hotels with food service and health facilities, and their requirements begin in 2024. I will note that we have already had discussions with Apple, which will likely be falling under the Tier 2 category for their food service operations in Cupertino. 1383 does not require any new services for residents in Cupertino, but we will need to increase education for getting food scraps into the green carts. And residential routes will be included in auditing and feedback activities. Schools will also be part of our outreach efforts. We are also fortunate in the timing of our recently negotiated 10-year agreement with Recology for waste collection and processing of recyclable and organic materials. We were able to anticipate many of the needs and shared responsibilities of 1383, including staffing, auditing, and education. Procurement is a very big part of 1383 for us, but it does not appear in the draft ordinance as it pertains to requirements we will need to impose on ourselves and thus more appropriate for a policy. 1383 does not require the city to have a policy in place around these procurement requirements, but it is recommended. To help encourage markets to develop for products derived from the increase in these collected organic materials, 1383 requires jurisdictions themselves to procure amounts of compliant materials using a formula based on our population. Compliant products include mulch, compost, biomass-generated electricity, or renewable gas made from collected organic materials. We are still strategizing the best approach to comply with this state mandate. To show the scale of these requirements, for Cupertino to meet this with compost alone, the required annual amount would be about 7,000 cubic yards, which is about seven times what we currently give away at the compost site and use at some of the city's parks in a year. One idea is to get some combination of renewable gas, electricity, and the compost and mulch to meet the requirements, but the gas and electricity are not readily available yet and will be pricey. Many cities are challenged by this requirement, and the solution may lie in a regional approach. Agreements to meet these requirements would appear before council before consideration. The city will also be required to procure recycled content paper products. We have formed a working group to collaborate with the various departments, including consideration of special paper needs, costs, consideration of special paper needs, costs, and performance. As with all aspects of thirteen eighty-three, records must be kept and reported on. Our plan is to capture these various procurement requirements in an updated environmentally preferable purchasing policy. We've been talking about thirteen eighty-three for over a year, beginning when we did the outreach regarding the Recology Agreement. We presented to the Chamber of Commerce both as part of the Recology Agreement outreach and as a standalone presentation focused on what thirteen eighty-three will mean for businesses. We also spent time with the Sustainability Commission on this topic, and they were supportive as these regulations help with the community-wide and municipal greenhouse gas reduction measures in the Climate Action Plan. Information about the agreement and thirteen eighty-three went out to all customers via direct mail during the negotiation process with Recology, and we have additional outreach planned. Uh, we're going to begin with working with those businesses that do not yet subscribe to organic services and see what amount of service makes sense and if any exemptions apply. We have also set up a dedicated webpage at Cupertino.org/SP1383 that lists the requirements for each type of entity. For compliance with thirteen eighty-three, our ordinance must be effective January first twenty twenty-two, and language about enforcement with penalties is required, but not until twenty twenty-four. The first two years will be focused on helping businesses get set up with the needed service or exemptions, providing auditing and feedback in partnership with Recology staff. Check that large generators of surplus edible food have recovery contracts and practices in place and offer technical assistance if needed. In twenty twenty-four, enforcement with penalties begins, and tier-two surplus food generators need to meet the recovery requirements. To assist jurisdictions in preparing and adopting ordinances, CalRecycle provided model ordinance language. With attorney review, we have proposed adopting the bulk of that language customized for Cupertino. Along the way, we needed to add defined terms and make some additional edits for clarity. The section of the model ordinance specific to food recovery was carefully customized by a county stakeholder working group, and the various jurisdictions are encouraged to adopt it as close to proposed as possible to enable a unified regional effort for food recovery. Cupertino is taking that food recovery piece and proposing it as a new section six point two four oh three eight. If this draft ordinance is approved tonight, the second reading is tentatively scheduled for October nineteenth. If adopted, the effective date would be January first as required by the regulations. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ursula. Are there any questions from council, Ursula, in the presentation? Councilmember Wei?
Yes, I have one question, actually two. Um, are schools part of the businesses? Because I know the school cafeteria generates food, and they might have leftovers that could be comply with this. That's my first question. My second question, what is our fiscal impact that when we start to enforce education? How much? Do you haven't asked me for our fiscal impact?
Sure. So with regard to schools, um, they, like I said, we will do outreach to them, but they are actually under the jurisdiction of the state. So CalRecycle has said they will enforce on schools, but that the city should work with the schools for education. And they do have their own separate waste hauling agreements with Recology, so they're not even under our same franchise. But we will try to work with them, and everyone knows there are food recovery issues with schools and a lot of opportunity there. And then the fiscal impact with the newly negotiated Recology Agreement, we were able to already fold in uh most of the thirteen eighty-three requirements. So extra help, um, you know, making sure we had processing capacity, the rates were impacted a little bit, as you may remember. And so we were very fortunate in the timing on that. The those, the piece that wasn't in the agreement was this procurement piece, right? Where we're gonna need to buy electricity or tons of compost or whatever, and that's the part that we are still working on, and all the cities are still working on it. So that's why a regional partnership of some kind may be the answer, some sort of regional ag project. Uh, we just don't know. We're, and we're still pursuing renewable gas, you know, through A-Bag and electricity through S-SEBC.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Moore.
Great, um, thank you. It's it's actually a question for the city attorney, and I was wondering if if SB six one nine would have any impact on us at all. Um, it looks like that went to the governor for signature on the seventeenth of September, uh, so it it yet may be signed. It looked like there was a lot of support for it. I'm thinking that it won't make any difference um to us, but I I'd like to hear about that.
Well, certainly Chris Johnson can speak to it, but um we did think about that, and it's, I don't think it's gonna help us, or I don't think we're gonna need the the sort of minimal uh support that it offers us, but Chris may have more to add to that. And and Deborah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I don't I don't actually have anything to add to that. Deborah may.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember six one nine, when it was initially introduced, um, had great promise to offer um delays in the timeframes for local agencies to implement the thirteen eighty-three requirements. But as it was amended and ultimately passed by the legislature, it offers substantially less relief than it had originally been anticipated. Um, if a city is not um on a substantial path towards compliance with the requirements of thirteen eighty-three, then by March of twenty twenty-two, a local jurisdiction can apply to CalRecycle with its plan for compliance. Um, here, as Ursula described, given all of the good progress that Cupertino has already made, I'm not anticipating that that's gonna be um a form of relief that this city will need to seek.
Okay, that's kind of what I thought, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Next, we have Vice Mayor Chow.
Um, hi. So for, I guess, um, a lot of businesses will need to adjust. And for residences, exactly what kind of adjustment they will be required to make?
So residents already have access to the service, so our ask of the residents is that they really start getting all those food scraps into their green carts. So the cart is there, the food is there, we just need to get the food in the cart. And we know that's a logistical challenge, but.
Yeah, but do we have like a goal to reach that we want to have certain amount of reduction?
Yeah, the goals are statewide, and they've just, instead of setting a goal and letting the cities work on it, they've set very prescriptive things we need to do. So we need to educate, we need to make the service available, we need to go out and flip lids and see if people are doing it. And if they're not doing it, or they're doing it wrong, we need to offer that feedback to them, you know, in a gentle educational way, you know, and at first for sure, but.
You will be looking into people's cart, and if they are not putting food waste there, you will be sending a letter?
Yeah, we would. There there is, the lid flip is a is a time-honored tradition of the of the waste specialist. Uh, we, you know, we've gone around and done that in the past, just to see if people were already putting food in their carts a couple of years ago. And we we went around, we had a clipboard describing what we were doing and and why, and if people had questions and walked up to us, we'd be happy to explain to them. Uh, but you know, it's not like rooting around, it's just like a quick flip. Usually, uh, the nose knows, you know, if food is in the green cart. We don't have to go rummaging around through people's stuff. But that, there's a whole robust auditing requirement of thirteen eighty-three, so we'll be doing that.
Oh, and one more thing. So I see that you, there there is a proposed ordinance. So are there different components that's different from other cities that we have adopted or is, are there options, right? Like, um, or are we adopting exactly the same thing as every other city? Exactly only what the state law required? Or is there any part that we went a little bit beyond?
Um, Deborah might be better able to speak this, because I know she's worked with other cities, but there's nothing I recall where we went particularly above and beyond what was required, because what's required is already pretty bracing. So, yeah, it, you know, I can't think of a really a place where above and beyond was was there to be considered, but I'm looking at Deborah's square, she can't tell.
Yes, um, Vice Mayor Chow, we did use the CalRecycle model ordinance as the base for Cupertino's proposed proposed ordinance that's before you today. Uh, one difference, though, is that we integrated it into the existing Cupertino municipal code. So it does, um, it's formatted a bit differently, it flows a little bit differently, but the substance um is nearly identical to what is provided in the thirteen eighty-three regulations and uh consistent with the CalRecycle model ordinance that they're recommending all jurisdictions adopt. Um, and as Ursula mentioned, specific to the food recovery piece, the language in the proposed ordinance before you today is exactly identical with what the county working group has proposed for cities in your region to adopt, so that there's consistency throughout the county among the cities for the food recovery element of the ordinance.
Okay, so I guess my question is, we have the SB thirteen eighty-three and CalCycle's model ordinance in the cities. So the cities align with CalCycle. And the question is, is the CalCycle align exactly with thirteen eighty-three, or is there some difference?
I understand your question. The regulations implementing thirteen eighty-three are quite prescriptive, that is very detailed, and the CalRecycle model ordinance is nearly identical to those prescriptive regulations. They're essentially one and the same.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Moore, you have your hand up. Did you have a follow-up clarifying question?
Oh, it it might actually be something that uh John Zarelli could answer as well. I know, we we were speaking about the Recology contract. It was, at that time, I found that I could uh have three recycling bins. And with regards to the compost bins, which have all been traded out recently with the Cupertino logo on them, um, I think they mentioned that we could have more of those bins if we needed them as well. Um, and I'm wondering if that is is still an option, and and just for people's education, that they are aware of that. And then where can people go uh to learn about how we can put these um kitchen wastes in the bin so that we don't end up with something that's really offensive after six days?
Uh, welcome, John, and thank you, Councilmember Moore.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Paul, uh, oh, councilmembers, Councilmember Moore. Um, I don't have the contract in front of me, but I'm ninety percent positive that residents can get additional recycling carts and organic carts at no additional cost, I think up to one or two carts. Uh, I will double-check and follow-up with Ursula on that.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay, I've got hands raised from Vice Mayor Chow as well as Councilmember Willie. Do you, Vice Mayor Chow, also have a follow-up question, or was that just? Okay, so your hand's down now on your microphone. Uh, so Councilmember Willie, did you have questions of the presenter or um anyone else that can help clarify?
Actually, I think I've got my answer, so I think I'm good for delivery. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you, Councilmember Willie. Um, let me go to members of the public at this time. If there are any members of the public that would like to speak on this item number eleven, uh, please raise your hand at this time. I don't see anybody's hand raised, and so let me give uh an additional moment in case uh people need to reach for their devices and correct button and whatnot. Okay, let's bring this back to council. I would like to request a motion. Um, before we do that, I'll ask our city clerk to please conduct the first reading of the ordinance, and that would be ordinance number two one dash two two three one. Madam City Clerk.
This is the first reading of ordinance number twenty-one dash two two three one and ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino, amending city code to repeal section six point two four point zero three seven, adopt a new section six point two four point zero three seven, adopt a new section six point two four point zero three eight, amend section six point two four point zero one zero, six point two four point zero two zero, six point two four point zero six zero, six point two four point two four zero, and nine point one six point zero three zero to mandate organic waste disposal redu- disposal reduction, which includes a finding that adoption of the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Uh, would anyone like to move the recommended action uh with the city clerk's reading of ordinance number two one dash two two three one constituting the first reading thereof? And I see a hand raised from Councilmember Wei.
Yes, um, I moved that ordinance number twenty-one dash two 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 three.
We can just say yes, I I.
Oh, so moved.
Okay, great. And Vice Mayor Chow, would you like a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, great. We have a motion and a second. We've conducted the first reading. Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is not up anymore. And so I will, um, you know, thank our staff uh for their hard work and um, and uh let's go ahead and uh call on Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Willie, did you want to say something before we conduct a roll call vote?
Yeah, I'll just go ahead and weigh in once again, not let the uh the chance slide by, but uh, yeah, very good staff report, um, very good topic. I mean, the climate impacts, the the uh shortage of foods that there are, you know, being able to recycle, um, all these things are are good. And so I think it's good for the for the the planet, it's good for the country, it's good for our community here. And so I think we're making a real good uh step in the right direction. The more more steps, you know, I believe the more steps that we make in the right direction, the more opportunities that we're gonna see for even more steps. So let's keep the progress going, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Vice Mayor Chow.
So just wondering, uh, is there a webpage where people can find information on the city website? I see there is a page on SB thirteen eighty-three on with a lot of information, but is there something residents can come quickly find out what's the change coming January first?
Yeah, the thirteen eighty-three page is our is our main page for it, but we are working on more, um, you know, kind of user-friendly outreach to folks to help, I think, to speak to Councilmember Moore's question about, you know, how the heck do we get the food in the cart without making a big mess? And so we're gonna come up with some outreach to help people navigate some of those decisions, and we'll get those up on the webpage as well. Right now, it's just a very technical list of what you gotta do, but.
I don't know people knows what's SB thirteen eighty-three. Maybe you uh need uh organic waste reduction or maybe a video on how to get things there without making a mess might be helpful.
Yeah, we definitely have a couple of video ideas planned and, you know.
Yeah, that's great. Um, good to see this happening, yeah. Thank you for taking the initiative to already start to implement this even before, way before the deadline.
Yes, props to my predecessor who thought ahead on the multifamily, because multifamily's causing a lot of heartache for other cities, so really happy we already have that service for those folks.
Wonderful, thanks so much. And uh, let's go ahead and conduct that roll call vote. Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Excellent, thank you very much. And we are on to the end of our agenda, and the last item is council and staff comments along with future agenda items. Um, let's say, let's say two minutes each, and we'll start with our interim city manager. Greg, was there anything that you wanted to uh note before we moved on to council?
No, thank you for the good discussion.
Great, thanks very much. Um, Mr. Larson. And so let's go to Councilmember Moore, followed by Councilmember Wei. And uh, just as a reminder, a couple of minutes each, um, and uh any final comments and our future agenda items?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. Um, so I I think I mentioned this earlier, around five forty-six, I received the uh the PDF um, uh, presentation from the Menstrual Equality Committee from the Cupertino High School, and I, they didn't get a chance to present this tonight, uh, but some of their suggestions, which which we did go over, uh, were to. uh, were to uh get some support for AB three sixty-seven, which it sounds like that uh that has already taken place. Uh, and I would like to see this on a future agenda item. Some of their potential places, which they mentioned, uh, would be uh potentially Wilson, Portal Park, the community center at Quinlan. Uh, and it sounds as though they have already taken the initiative to contact Sand Hill. Um, and they, they have a great presentation. So I would like to see this um show up uh on a future agenda and to see if there are places within the city that uh we can provide this service. I, I know my son's attended Santa Clara University and the, the restrooms there um uh did provide these products uh free of charge. And I've also seen this at, at the gym. Um, they didn't mention having this at our local sports center, but that might potentially be another location. And I'd like us to uh have a, a discussion about this. Thank you.
Thank you, member, uh, council member Moore. And we'll uh move on to council member Way.
Okay, so um I have one uh agenda item that I would propose. Uh, last time council member Willie um talked about the safe storage of firearms in homes. I did not second it because I wanna make sure, I understand we have a lot of things on the city uh work plan. So, but, so I wanna do some research how, how, how much time it's gonna take. I, I do would like to um put it on the future agenda, but for next spring. And maybe in the meantime, maybe our public safety commission can look at it, we do a little study. I, I would love that to be on the um future agenda, but not until next spring, cause we have a housing elements right now. But I would like to propose it and I hope uh maybe council member Willie would uh agree.
Um, okay, thank you, council member Way. And um, well, okay, so let me, let me ask uh uh Greg, Greg, I, I think before did you an email from, and this is procedural, just a matter of timing. I forwarded you an email from the advocacy group that was asking about whether you and I talked about it at our scheduling. Did you happen to follow up with them at all or uh are we still pending on that one?
We are still pending on that, but I did discuss this with council member Way last week after you and I spoke.
Okay.
So, um. Uh, do you think uh putting this on the agenda for next spring?
Yeah, the request here is for our next work plan. Um, okay. So um, you know, I'll go ahead and support that. Um, you know, I, I think it makes sense, given the fullness of our, you know, current, uh, current year's agenda. Um, so I'll go ahead and uh assuming council member Way, you're, you're done with your comments at this point? Okay, great.
And I'm good.
Great. Uh, Vice Mayor Chow.
Okay, so, um, one thing is the, I mentioned earlier, I think we have people usually objecting back fencing balcony in the house. And as due to SB nine coming up, um, I wonder if we can modify our municipal code so that any pro- any project with back fencing balcony will be discretionary approval, because this situation might be different. Um, so that might be part, that could be added to our current objective standards uh work. Um, and the second one is uh uh, I think I mentioned this a few times, wherever we have consulted, I keep have to ask that any communication with the consultant will be treated as communication with city staff, so that all communication and work product and pro- documents will be public records. But then I don't think I should be requesting that. Every time, this should be part of the policy. How do we make that a part of the policy so that it's just standard procedure? And then the next one is, um, I think we have asked for forming a new commission. Um, but the commission application is coming up soon. But I understand that the city staff is planning to put that uh in November. Hopefully, we will have that in time. Um, but uh I think every time we, oh, sorry. This is another item. The community grant, sorry. The community grant, when we looked at the community grant this year, we, although we made an exception for teen high school group. So we made an exception for high school this year, which doesn't qualify under the current, the current requirement. So I think we should be looking at whether our grant uh criteria makes sense or maybe we should create a separate category for high school clubs. And then another thing, the historic society line, budget line item, what exactly is the requirement for them to continue to receive this budget line item of twenty thousand dollars? That should be discussed uh early. And uh, and another thing is the virtual meeting for all commissions that whether we, since this is continuing, so are we continue? Uh, I would like to see actually the public comment, we cannot see their faces. I see other school board meetings, city meetings, we can see the face of public, uh, so they can turn on their videos. So why can't we do that? Uh, I don't want to see just names.
Well, I've been to a number of school board meetings for CUSD in the last year and, and I can assure you that you can't see faces of commenters, but. Um, okay, well, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Um, let's go on to council member Willie. Uh, Greg, your hand was up. Did you wanna speak to a, a follow-up point or before we go on, council member Willie?
Well, I can follow up with uh Vice Mayor Chow's issues in our weekly meeting on Thursday.
Okay, yeah, no, there's a good half dozen of them, so let's um, yeah, move forward. Um, council member Willie? Uh, mute, uh, unmute yourself, council member.
Thank you, sorry. So I, in short, I support the request by uh Vice Mayor. I just think uh we need to make the objectives of each of those more concise, so that we really know what, what we're after. Then what I would toss out is asking the uh uh city manager if he could at some point prepare a update for us on how much the city pays for the crossing guards and where they're currently deployed. You know, we got another email from residents uh talking about Stevens Creek Elementary School needing a crossing guard. But yet, I, I think we really need the big picture. How many gar- crossing guards are there? Where are they deployed? What it is to the city budget? And then from there, we sit there and conceivably can add more where needed. But I do think we need that, that foundation. So if he can somehow uh work that in, I greatly appreciate.
Okay, thank you, council member Willie. All right, and um, on, on mine, you know, I'll just um ask staff to um, look into what we can be working on on a staff level for some of these items. Um, and then also try, to try to match some of the uh requests with what we already have pending. So for instance, Vice Mayor Chow's historic society budget line item, I, I think uh we do have a, a subcommittee that was working with historic society, for instance. So maybe some follow-up there, since the subcommittee's already formed. Um, on um, on council member Moore's request for um looking into what the city can be doing to provide um, you know, menstrual products in our uh facilities. I think that's actually something that could be within the discretion of, you know, city administration. Um, but if not, we could be teeing it up for a potential discussion uh in the future. Um, and, and so just some requests to staff to, you know, follow up on these and see uh if we can in an efficient manner, uh without adding to our, you know, already very, uh, you know, you know, um a quite packed, um, you know, work plan, um, you know, tick off some of these, the, these requests. So um, you know, with that, I wanna thank everyone for a, a, a very productive meeting this evening. Um, hopefully, uh, we're, you know, going in the, in the right direction with regard to a number of our problems. And um, you know, thank you very much. I, I, I think we're getting our narrative out there. And uh hopefully, uh, we're able to um, you know, get past some of um, you know, what I, what I describe as, you know, in my, my mayor's corner writing, just to give a plug for that, as uh some of the untoward, um, you know, uh motivations uh that are generally grounded in, um, you know, greed and perhaps a little bit of uh undertones of um prejudice and discrimination, you know, so hopefully, um, you know, we can move on uh and do, continue to do good things for not just our community, but uh the public at large. Well, everyone, thank you very much. Uh, our next meeting is on October nineteenth. Um, and so before I adjourn our currently uh regularly scheduled October fifth meeting, well before midnight, I might add, um, I would like to just let everyone know that our city manager search goes well. Uh, you know, we've scoured the country and applicants have come in from the four corners. Uh, we'll be commencing our uh first round of uh council interviews this weekend. So you'll see that, that notice come out in the next day or two. Just wanted to let everyone know. Uh, and then to feel some comfort in um, you know, our follow-through on that, as with many things. So thank you very much and we'll see you on October nineteenth. Have a great night.